Yeah, I know I sat in my truck for twenty minutes waiting for that downpour to stop this morning.
Commissioner, the meeting is live.
All this July first meeting of Riley County Commission to order, please everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good Monday morning, everybody. Here we are, July. Halfway through the year already, can't believe it.
No, I can't.
I know. Uh, I don't know. Second half of the year is gonna be crazier than the pledge, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is too, but we're gonna get through it. Yeah.
Remember that event Thursday?
Yes.
It's gonna be crazier.
Yeah. Yeah, well, uh, we'll work through it, I guess, you know, we seem to, so. Okay, well, we'll, uh, start off with some public comments this morning.
The kids keep us.
Yeah.
What would my readers talk about?
But yeah, I've just been asking you on the interview, you have fifteen seconds left. I'm not doing grace for any business there.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. My name is Gary Oles. I live at thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle. Uh, as you know, I'm a frequent visitor here, probably more frequent visitor in the, in the city of Manhattan's meetings. And I'm always here to talk about the same thing, so it's a broken record. It's property taxes. And I made a suggestion to the city of, uh, Manhattan on Tuesday that I'm gonna make to you as well. Uh, I'm doing rough calculations, so don't hold me to them, please. Uh, approximately a quarter mil of the current estimated valuation of mil, mil value. Um, is going to have to go to RCPD roughly, two hundred thousand bucks, roughly. Um, I would suggest, uh, this is. Strange suggestion. I would suggest that you raise the mil levy by a quarter mil. And stop making up the difference from other budgetary line items in the city, in the Riley County budget. I discovered that Manhattan's been doing that for years. And I'm gonna advocate that you raise the mil levy, as I did to them, to the proportional amount that RCPD is asking for more money. And then, when a citizen asks you, you point over to RCPD and say, go talk to them. That's only fair. They have no accountability in the sense that your board does. You're all elected, they're not all elected. Most of them are, granted, but they're not all elected. But they need to hear from citizens because the cost of law enforcement has to be discussed. Okay, by the citizenry. Um, I'm not here to say that we should be fined, I'm not saying that, but we need to look at it. And in that wa- same venue of property taxes, real quickly, hopefully, is, uh. I don't think I'd rather run across the person that really sincerely complains about their valuation. They'd be crazy to complain about their valuation. They have to complain about the taxes. The problem is the cost of government. And within the cost of government, one of the problems, I won't say the problem, but one of the problems is personnel costs. And as I advocated to the city of Manhattan, I would suggest you freeze wages. And when I say wages, it's probably more appropriate to say salaries. Okay? People who are salary, you probably ought to not be getting a raise for several years. People who are hourly, eh, it's a little more understandable. Because it's more of a struggle for them. And I'm sure people who are on wages would say, oh, it's a struggle for our salary, would say it's a struggle for us too, no doubt. But personnel, as I understand it, is the bulk of the expense. I discovered, talking to the city of Manhattan, and I had no idea with this. But based on the information I had from Jason. Ten percent. Of the money they collect. At the Warren money. That's represents ten percent of the budget. Ninety, I'm talking revenue, ninety percent is sales tax. Ninety percent is sales tax. Now, you don't have that luxury from a sales standpoint. So my encouragement to you is, uh, point to RCPD. Because they're one of the problems, not that you're not, but, and it's not personal, okay? It's not personal. Thank you.
Evan, do you got something?
Yep.
Okay.
Good morning, Evan McMillan, Public Works. Just a reminder that transfer station will be closed this Thursday for Fourth of July. Thanks.
Thank you. I thought you had public comments for a change there. That was threw me off, okay. Anybody else?
That's the way to get three more minutes. You gotta walk out of the room and come back in.
All right, we're ready to close off public comment this morning, and we'll move on to commissioner comments, and then Commissioner McKinley.
Okay, well, um, I was in last week, I had mentioned to register a new vehicle, and it went very well. Wanted to help, I recommend setting up appointment time online, it's really easy. And makes it very quick to go through instead of waiting with crowds. It works well, they, they do a good job over there. Um, there was kind of a mess transferring titles and all this stuff, and they helped me through it. Because I had it messed up. Um, Friday, uh, we went to the Great Plains Theater in Abilene to see Hello Dolly. I'd heard about this venue, but we never attended. My tax guy was in the play this time, so we went to see it. And it was a good show. A trip over there was not. We left early, planned to, uh, dine in Junction City, and we made it to Junction City just as the storm hit. It was raining so hard, even on, it was starting hydrating a little bit, so I pulled into that Walmart parking lot, sat there for a while. And thought, well, what are we gonna do? I'll just take it easy. So I pulled back out and started down, started hailing as soon as I got on the seventy-seven. The next exit, and I've got my new car. So, next exit, I pulled out and there's an old, uh, closed bank that drives through. So I pulled in there and waited for it to stop, and we were there. Twenty to thirty minutes, because it hailed, and it was blowing, it was, and I don't see the pictures, it, it was a, it was a mess over there. And, uh, and hail was only pea size, it wasn't gonna do anything, but. By the time it cleared and went to drive over there, we only had time to drive through a hamburger, go through and get a hamburger on the way to the. Like, but that was, that was the hardest rain I've ever seen. It was coming down so hard, you could, the wipers, it looked like they weren't even on. Um, then Saturday, we spent the afternoon in Randolph for their, uh, Independence Day celebration. Uh, looked through all the cars they always have displayed, there were lots of neat cars up there, and they have craft booths and some food vendors. Snow cones to cool you off. Because it was getting a little warm. And then we, uh. Rode in a parade and tossed candy to the kids, and, uh, it's small town, it's not a big celebration, it's really neat place. That's all I got.
Okay, well, let's see, Friday morning, I was downtown for an appointment, then came to the office to get some work done. Uh, after going through a stack of paperwork, responding to emails, and working on July's schedule. Went over to the clerk's office, uh, to see how they were using the extra space from the move on Thursday. We all spent some time thinking at it, discussing how it could be reorganized. Uh, I think it can be reworked and done more useful for everyone, but we're both kind of settling in, it looks, looks empty over there.
With the front too, empty, yeah, with the front too, too, uh, customer service station, empty, yeah. I E. the reason for giving up wildlife and parks.
Yeah, so, um, I did set an appointment to get my driver's license when we, so. So, uh, you know, that's coming up, I'm sure that'll go smoothly, so, we'll see. Uh, Saturday, I too went to Randolph for a while in the afternoon. I didn't see you, I saw your car, but I didn't see you. Looked at the cars, and then I rode with State Senator Ready in the parade, um, so. She had quite a few people with her, so. Uh, but I didn't stay for the fireworks that evening, I was, it was really hot. And I was thinking about going back, and I said, ah, it's too hot, I'm just gonna stay. Uh, let's see, Sunday, did, after doing some yard work, I went over, uh, today's agenda and documents for today's meeting. Um, and that's it for me.
Okay. Well, uh, that's for me, uh, Friday morning before the weather set in, there was a, uh. Change of command ceremony, uh, for the First and Fifth Division up at Fort Riley. From Major General John B Meyer to, uh, Major General, uh, Monty Rome, who will be in place for the next two years. Uh, that was at the Calvary Parade Field on Fort Riley, and it was early enough in the morning that it hadn't gotten real warm and humid yet, so it was actually pretty nice. Did want to take a moment to welcome, uh, General Runan's family to Fort Riley. As well as wish, uh, General Meyer and his family, uh, well in their next set of endeavors, and. Really appreciated his leadership over the last two years west stationed here. Um, you gotta remember the first half of that, just about the first half of that, he's been Easter year up in Poland. So, um, really didn't get a chance to get really settled in here, but still did a really, really good job, so I really appreciated his work and efforts. Uh, also on Friday, I had lunch with Adam Boyle, he's the Business Consultant Team Lead for Networks Plus over at Elper Trump. Discussing networking and security I T items, as well as some other related things. Uh, originally met him down at, uh, K C C A Pittsburgh. And, um, we've been kind of bouncing back and forth, we had appointments scheduled several times, and both of us rescheduled, and. So, um, I don't know, um, I don't know what Network Plus has to necessarily help or assist, but. I'm letting him meet and work with Cory and see if there's anything to assist, um, I told him I. I would always prefer to work with a, a local company on things, if it, if it, you know, tends to work out, but. Um, we'll certainly see. Uh, Friday, I did finally make it upstairs to check out the new elections office and the remodel up here in the C P E building. Um, thought it turned out great. I was, yeah, real pleasantly surprised, I know that was kind of. Chicken with their heads cut off a little bit, so, but, uh, just, I really just kind of wanted to see what the layout stuff was, and I. May go back up in a couple of weeks and just kind of see after everything gets settled, but, uh, looks like it's gonna work. Very, very well.
Appreciate it, Chris.
Yeah.
Commissioners, because, yeah, it's a much better. For elections.
Yeah.
And for the other divisions of the office, because just here's a prime witness in what it's like with elections in there, and no space and elbow room. Commissioner McKinley, I tried to get ahold of you one day when we had all the walkways blocked and stuff, we're sitting on the floor doing election stuff.
Oh, really?
And you had left already, and Commissioner McKinley did get to come over and see how.
Oh.
It just disrupts the entire office.
I came, and I came into the clerk's office after I had lunch too, and it looks real different in there.
Two kind of a conversation Gary and I had, Gary and I have many conversations about, you know, the growth in government, you know? The biggest growth in elections is due to federal and state mandates. We haven't even hired new personnel, but just the processes we have to go through, and you know, that, that's him and I talk about taxes and growth, and. Have a very cordial relationship, a good relationship on talking about those issues, and that's part of it. It's nothing we've done, but we have to keep up the regulations.
Talking, just talking to Susan, she says every time she goes in and out of her office, her office, she's gotta, she's gotta check in. Really? She's gotta, yeah.
Well, just like I told you, commissioners, we can't have one person go back to the election, put it in my frame now.
Yeah, yeah.
New change last year, two personnel have to go, even if it's a one-person job.
Course we do.
Two people have to go.
Yeah.
And it is tracked electronically by security systems.
I think the strangest thing is she's gotta be on camera all day.
Yeah.
That is bizarre. That is absolutely bizarre.
So, so there's more technologies, cameras, everything, growth in government.
You gotta remember that, you know, that, yeah, that's an extra cost. Now, one thing I think we're gonna have to do is, and just get a sheet from up top, so they can just slide some kind of a fire pole.
I wanted a fire pole.
Can't be fun. Whatever it is.
We can't really do anything else to go directly to their rooms, so, you know, we've got, got to get creative with that one. But outside of that, I think everything, I mean, wanting to go up there, they didn't want to mess with going up there where they were working on construction. They didn't want to mess with it while they were actually trying to move, so, um, Friday was it.
Glad to go to go up.
Yeah, and I'll check it out again in a couple of weeks when.
Kind of settled out, the cabinetry in there is just amazing for storage.
Well, I watched them basically from my office bring all of that in, you know, so, yeah, it worked out pretty well.
To last for a long time.
Yeah.
Elections takes a lot of store.
And the windows.
Windows are great.
Just been able to walk out down to the hallway and actually like see all the way out to the grain elevator of them, yeah, I was just like, wow, that's amazing. Yeah, anyway. Uh, also on Friday, I met with Natalie Gordon with the Childcare Task Force to discuss some items pertaining to area childcare needs. Also several unrelated topics, it's kind of good to have the opportunity, um, to discuss. Um, just everything that's kind of going on, construction wise, related, just everything in general, so. Good to catch up with, with her and her team. Um, doing some good things, that's, uh, childcare incubators coming along, we've got an executive director. Um, getting ready to start doing some construction side of that, and some admin, so it's. Um, it's a process, but it is coming along, and I think it'll, it'll be a game changer here once that time comes. Um, also, it might be a good time to go ahead and mention this as well, and just as I said, now I've just got another email on this. Um, late last week, I got an email from a lady called Janet Brown, she is a production assistant for the show Viewpoint. Um, it's hosted by the actor Dennis Quaid. Um, I don't know how they reached out and found me, but they did, um, we're gonna have a call this afternoon about it. May or may not get an invite to this particular show, just want to throw it out there, um, we'll see how that goes, so I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, if nothing else, I figured that would be, um, just a good opportunity and exposure for everybody here at Riley County, so we'll see how that goes, but, um. Um.
Not familiar with that show.
Where is that show?
Um, it's just, um, it's basically, it's a, it's called, the whole entire thing is a project that they're doing, and they basically. Reach out to different types of people, and they talk political issues, um, cultural issues, social issues.
Is it just a podcast?
No, it's an actual production, production type show, and it's, it shows up on all the national syndicates. So, it's on Fox, it's on CNN, it's on YouTube, I checked it out on YouTube, that's where I saw it at, and, um, M S N B C. So, yeah, I kind of be curious to see how they. Found me, I don't know, I'm real curious about that, but I got the original email, I thought it was spam. And then they emailed me back again, and I thought, well, maybe it's not spam. Then I originally asked Vivian to maybe be on the call, because I just wanted a second opinion. And I figured media press, and then she offered Clancy as a second solution, and I thought, well, that's legal, so, yeah, probably makes sense.
I have no solution.
And you know how to write contracts, they have a part of that, maybe pull part of the deal, so, anyway, I'll keep everybody posted on that, but that may. Maybe coming up, I don't know, I'm just. Just laying it out there, and anyway.
I'll forward you both the, the website, you can go to, they, they style it as mini-documentary.
Yeah. Mini-doc, yeah, I think it's been on HBO or something too.
What's the name of it?
Viewpoint. I'll, um, I'll email the original, you can go from there. Yep. Okay. So, okay, and anyway, that's, that's all I've got this morning.
Okay, no business, commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes?
Let's see, I'll make a motion to approve the June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, uh, minutes of the Board of Riley County Commissioners is written.
Second.
Do we just second it to approve the minutes from the June twenty-seventh meeting of the Riley County Commission is written, all in favor?
Uh, the tentative agenda is, look, commissioners.
Good.
Any items for next week's press conference? Next year, Mr. Holman at nine o'clock with an executive session. Want the whole time plan six?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. At nine o'clock. For twenty minutes.
Uh, accusation of, uh, real property.
Yes, I didn't see on the agenda, Jason's coming in.
He is.
I was misunderstanding. Which if you look at the budget, you could. Act state. Yeah. About ten percent.
You can do that when you get sixty percent of our sales tax.
What is, what is the breakdown for sales tax?
Well, of our Riley County sales tax. It's only one percent.
The one percent for road and bridges?
No, the general sales tax. The general county sales tax they give.
I thought it was only, is it a one? I thought it was a half. And what's the, yeah, what, what's the purpose of one percent, or is it designated on ballot?
Yeah, you're correct, it's half percent. It's general, it's, it goes back decades, it's, it's just general size that, I mean, general operations.
So, actually, you know, they call it a county tax, we have to distribute it, we get thirty, thirty-five percent of it. Can I converse with you during this break time? So Greg, I was talking with a representative. Over the weekend. And he seemed to be confident that public education, you don't know how legitimate this is. Public education can be fully financed with no property tax. It can be financed with sales tax. Now, I don't think we're talking about the current sales tax level. Because they're cutting food, you know what I mean? But that doesn't mean they can't bring it back up to what it was, and use that amount to fund public education. When I was talking, talking Rich about that, like, okay, that's an interesting concept, but is any other state doing? Yeah, because if we're gonna trailblaze and do that, it could be an absolute disaster.
Yeah.
But.
Could be grave, you know? Could go greater, or crash. How much sales tax would it take?
I don't know how many billions it is.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know how much they're, I don't know how much they're giving up. In food sales taxes, they're lowering, you know what I'm saying? Somebody's, somebody in the P is probably keeping track of that, in terms of. How much change did you see out? Because they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have passed, well, I assume they wouldn't have passed that legislation unless they knew that. What we're losing here, you know, we're making up here. Well, because what they're not talking about is how can we reduce government, state government services? Well, but they're, I mean, they've been, all right, it's, uh, flush with money, the state has, the last few years have taken in a lot more than they're. Putting out, so.
In terms of sales tax, you gotta keep in mind with inflation, if you're making, you're getting a lot more revenue off of sales tax, and.
Yeah.
Over the course of time, that may or may not be the case, so it's, hmm, still kind of shaky.
Well, I, I don't even know.
Interesting concept.
I mean, I think if I'm, if I. I guess. I guess what he meant was. Guess I have to clarify, I guess what he meant was the twenty mil that the state charged.
So the state's portion of it.
And the oddest thing about talking with the school district last Wednesday. You know, you've talked with Riley in the past about it, Riley made it completely different. But in talking to Eric, it, it almost as though, they don't pay attention to them a lot. It has to do with per pupil. Enrollment funding. That the state has this formula. That they get to, so to speak, keep or not keep, in terms of dollars. Yeah. So, understanding the city and Riley's county's, county budget. Is, seems to be simpler, it's complicated, but it seems to be simpler than trying to understand a school district. Yeah, because they get their state money, and then they get some federal money from this, and, yeah, they have a lot of different. Plus, there's so many buckets. I don't, I don't mean referring to school districts of government, but every taxing entity has the same.
It is.
The same, well, they don't make laws. You know, it's.
They make policy.
Yeah. Well, they make taxes. They don't make policy, they make the taxes. That affects me. It's very difficult to go to their meetings, because. Well, first off, it's, it seems to be very rubber standardish. I don't, I don't know that that's true. You guys. Got those guys, you know what I mean? Yeah. There is like. Good, good. That's just my perception. I'm good guys.
Yes, can say, yeah, you might need it.
I love you.
Justin, clear out of here sometime.
I left the jacket, my wife just bought me like, I don't know, two months ago, three months ago, in Hawaii.
In Hawaii?
Airport.
Oh. That's no good.
Bought me a black jacket, fortunately it was cheap, it's a cheap black, black jacket.
I would have claimed it was stolen.
It was.
Yeah, there you go.
It was a nightmare, um, you know, we were supposed to fly out like at ten at night, or nine at night, and that got delayed till about eleven, and then it got delayed, and then it got canceled in the air. And it's like, I guess I took my jacket off and laid it on the chair. Fortunately, it's inexpensive, yeah.
Uh, Gary and I were talking about that, with the representative said about funding it with sales tax. Uh, yeah, as a school district, wouldn't you just trust the state to always send you the money you needed, just like they do for community corrections, motor vehicle, name on?
Yeah. L A V T R, they promise a lot.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Wouldn't you, just, yeah. That's why I say they keep complaining about elections and stuff, take it, you guys take elections, you guys do it all. Take it, I'm fine with it. Just see how good a job you can do that.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think like the little smaller crowd this year up in Randolph.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That surprised me.
The number of cars was bigger, because they had some parked out on the street, they heard, and just didn't park, they had to roll up on the streets, they had a lot of cars in there.
Yeah, that surprises me.
That must seem like, you know, to me. Driving great, just didn't seem as full as it has been.
Because the weather was decent, I mean.
Yeah.
We complained about, I mean, because I was working outside, it was hot, but it could have been ten degrees hotter, easily.
It was warm, but it wasn't horrible.
Uh huh.
I can tell you that recently, it's been a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve in Las Vegas.
But it's drier.
That's what they say. I told you before, they always said, uh, both my sons lived in Houston for a period of time. Oh, they said ninety there is far worse than a hundred and fifteen in Las Vegas.
Talk about humidity.
Yes. Right, off of the goals, it's just.
It's like walking through soup, they, yeah. They, uh, old town, it, the, traditionally, I guess, the town of Houston kind of empties out to the extent. It can, like, July and August, people take their vacations in because they want to get somewhere else. Yeah.
Did you, when you came down Third Street?
Yeah, I did.
Come through the, I mean, the water was deep. That water was.
I don't think it was as deep as when you come through, because when I, after I got here, I got here about ten after seven. I sat there and it poured, and I'm sure that's what you can, because it poured for like twenty, I sat in my truck for twenty minutes waiting for it to slow down, if I came in.
To clear up over the curbs for.
Yeah, that's the rain.
There was a steady truck sitting there.
Uh huh.
What they were doing, but they're sitting there looking.
I'm surprised they didn't fix that drainage, because they just fixed that road a few years ago, and I thought they were gonna resolve all that, but.
Oh, cow, that was. I mean, cars were going real slow, is.
You got one of those. In perfect drainage.
Yes. And I think that's probably all you need to think.
What you think when they.
I guess, I mean, for their, for long, I, I didn't send them my phone.
No, I, I did.
I just accepted, and it wasn't. Anything other than still talking about phone calls.
Well, it's like, maybe it's too separate.
Oh, is Vivian here?
No. Need somebody to.
Where's our cadet?
Pick us out.
Here, I'll do it, yeah.
Yeah, I can do the audio and video, but I can't set up the.
Can you send Vivian over real quick for executive session? Thank you.
Sorry about that, I thought, didn't even think to look since.
Yeah, I didn't think to say anything.
We need extended twenty minutes for the early start.
Oh, you can.
And if you want to.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I was trying to.
That's, that's up to you, which maybe you'll know when you get into it. We can come, well, we can obviously come out and go back in.
It'd be nice to have twenty minutes.
Yeah.
And that's. Julie shouldn't take very long. I think the commissioners are familiar enough with that one.
Yeah.
And that we're using those funds for that position, so no impact on Ed Balorn.
He's like the ad lib. You want to stay with the script? That's the way.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that. That's New York.
I didn't think to say, I should have.
Sales that too.
I'm guessing.
I do too, and that really angers me.
All right, you ready to fire us up? So we pick at nine twenty-five just to get.
Yeah.
All right, I move the board of the county commissioners, including Chairman Ford, Vice Chairman McKinley and Commissioner Fokie. With Clancy Holman, County Counselor, Attorney for the Board, recess into executive session pursuant to the preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. Exception to the Kansas Open Meeting Act in order to discuss a possible real property purchase by the county. Open meeting to resume in the county commission chambers at nine twenty-five. Each department county clerk will be present for any executive session to provide factual information.
I would second that. Okay, it's been moved in seconded. What am I missing? Okay, so we had moved in seconded at the Board of County Commissioners, uh, recess into executive session pursuant to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property exceptions to the Kansas Open Meetings Act. And the open meeting to resume in the county commission chamber at nine twenty-five A M.
I move the board of county commissioners to an executive session.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded, the board of county commissioners to an executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Move the record reflect no binding actions taken during the executive session.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the record reflect no binding actions taken during the executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
And what are you, another motion?
Oh, I would make a motion that we recess as the board of county commissioners and reconvene as the board of county health.
Second.
It moved and seconded, we recess as the board of county commission and then reconvene as the board of county health. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're motioning out now.
If we can do it all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll figure that out later.
Julie goes from the health department, joined by Shanika Rose, our health educator and accreditation specialist. She's also in charge of our substance use program. To include the opioid education program and a community health educator. So a few weeks ago, we came to you with a request for opioid settlement funds to extend the part-time community health educator through 2025. You suggested looking at full-time. We came back with a request for thirty hours a week, simply to evaluate the need for potentially a full-time individual. And this, these hours would match up with the school hours, which this individual has a lot of education within this. Shanika's done a lot of research in this, and you can see here in the discussion that we are changing or we have changed the job description to reflect this, and it will be more professional position as they'll be doing more curriculum work with this education in the schools. That's the information provided there. And then, we have the fiscal impact, so Brittany has put together what it would look like for thirty hours a week for 2025, so you have the salary there with the benefits to total a little over forty-nine thousand. And this would be from opioid settlement funds for 2025. Any questions?
This Jenny's.
Yes, I think you need to comment on that, though. Right, we would have to open this position up.
Oh, because it's considered a new position because it's expanded.
Right, and the position description has changed. And still, being someone who can facilitate a nationally recognized curriculum is a difference from than what we've been. Yes. So with the education that we're currently doing, it's basically a presentation. This would be more of a curriculum, again, we, so we have changed the, we have changed the job description. So therefore, we have to like we always do for regular jobs, put it down again. And that's also for the change in hours since we moved it up to thirty hours.
No, I definitely think it's needed this month. I'm getting ahead as much of this story every time that I can is gonna be important. It's just not, it's just not settled.
Do we need two motions, one to expand the position and one to request the funds? I guess that's crazy.
The funds are ours, we just need to approve the position.
Okay, all right, then, I would make a motion to approve the request for opioid settlement funds to be used toward extending the community health education position at the board of county health through the 2025 budget season at thirty hours per week.
I'll second.
It's been moved and, excuse me, to, it's been moved and seconded to go ahead and approve the request for opioid settlement money to be used towards extending the community health education position through 2025 at thirty hours a week. All in favor?
Aye.
All resign, please. Thanks, Julie.
I was in that whole period. Had plenty other problems, but.
Can I ask a question? Why do we have Julie in both places outside the press conference? We gotta come in and out with two different motions on there, wouldn't it just make sense to leave on one?
It was probably due to time. Cindy asked department heads how much time is needed for each subject, so they don't, the department head doesn't believe they have enough time in each, but yeah, I mean, it's kind of departments to try and manage that.
Yeah, because it could have been put in there ahead of the press conference.
Agreed.
When we are at press conference, I'll go up and make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. It's right direction here. Recess as the board of health and reconvene as the board of county commissioners.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to recess as the board of county health and reconvene as the board of county commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Next commissioner, you have press conference.
Captain Steer. I thought I saw Captain Steer there, yeah, I know that's him.
Good morning.
So invited Captain Branch, she's got some updates on jail and corrections division that he wanted to share with y'all, and then Olive can answer questions, we'll have a few updates as well, so. I thought it'd be a good idea, with a bunch of terrible responsibilities, are to give an update on the facility. So I talked to Captain Hyatt and myself, we're gonna try to make sure we're part of the presentation to just give you an idea where we're at relates to the facility. Your jail currently has an average daily population of a hundred and fourteen. But that perspective, that's probably about a sixteen percent, seventy percent increase from three years ago. For all intents and purposes, it's a hundred and forty-seven bed facility, about a hundred and twenty-four. Pretty maxed out when it comes to the classification system. The CIP is greatly appreciated, that project's scheduled to start July twenty-second. We made all the arrangements for how we're gonna make sure we have food for the inmates. And we don't see any, any problems with that. Should be about a two-week, three-week process total. The water shut-offs were approved through county budget, the monies that are assigned for the facility itself. So we'll get some water shut-offs replaced that are desperately needed. The, the bigger issue that I want you to be aware of is this facility is designed to hold a maximum of eighteen female inmates. We've been sitting at sixteen to twenty-one female inmates now for several months. I don't know nationwide, I have researched this, this is a trend, more females are being incarcerated. The reality is we have no there's too many limitations for us to be in the house for any length of time, anything more than about sixteen, seventeen. And mentioned before, you've had a tour, you don't understand exactly, we say eighteen, the reality is sixteen about the maximum. So right now, we are paying and barring out female inmates to Otawatomi County. We have standing arrangements with Otawatomi and Dickinson County. And I'll have a Mr. Argo or Fang to tell you what the costs are on that. That needs to be said at this point, but it is an issue, it's something to keep an eye on, not in here saying, oh my gosh, the facility's too small, we need major. I just think it's something you should know as we move forward. And then the mental health paperwork slash program director commission, we have fifty-four applicants who have a position. Narrowed it down to twelve for interview, and four have moved on in that process. Hope they have somebody hired on staff within the next thirty to forty-five days. And with that will come, and I've been working with the county as it relates to actual mental health therapy treatments. We'll be doing a different presentation here in the near future on changing for making work medical care. So, do you have any questions?
You said, you know, like I said, I know we've been over a hundred and ten for a while, what was it? You said it's increased certain percent in the last few years.
Yeah, we used to sit around seventy, seventy-five, that's an ADP. We have been this high before, but not for sustained periods. You are since age that's twenty or twenty-one, yeah, we've been, I even, we're currently out of a hundred and eighteen inmates that we're currently housing. The ADP is our average daily population over thirty to expand. Today, we're at a hundred and eighteen. We have seven or eight of those that have been housed well over a year, one of them almost three years. And they're just, if you haven't had a tour, several of you can come down, I really would invite you to come down, I'd like to give you a tour, I think.
Several years ago.
It's a different kind of tour. We're actually gonna show you the jail.
I took one in October, and I think I took the other one in July, or whenever it was, we met as a group, and it's different, very different.
So, yeah.
That was July, or October of nineteen, if I didn't mention that. Very different.
I was gonna hit on a few community events and such that we were participating in. Obviously, rained off out of their festivities last weekend, Sergeant T told me that really well, had a large turnout, good participation from us. Participated on Juneteenth a couple of weeks ago, we, I thought that was a really good event and had good turnout, barbecue team was successful again, so we're real happy about that, I helped serve, so we had a, had a large turnout for that. Had an event in Nagyville with the chief, I participated in, he wanted to have some talking points and reach out to businesses and folks down there and participated in that and had some good conversations, so thought that that went well. Sergeant T is planning for, won't mess us up, I do it every time, Holo-Bloo in Linnerville, August ninth and tenth, so he's already making plans to help with the parade. The rodeo up there and some other events. In Ogden, we have a corporal that's been doing Coffee with a Cop, you might have seen it on Facebook, and that has been well received. I thought it was a really good idea that he had, and it's actually had a pretty good turnout, so happy about that. And then coming up in July, we've got Battle of the Badges happening, and then we've got a large training event. We have an annual active violence training for all of our officers, as many as we can get there as possible. We typically rotate to all the schools in three-eighty-three. And this year, we're actually, for the first time, we're gonna do one at the main West Campus High School and stuff, so that should be some good training, and we do that in partnership with MFD and EMS, and it's a, it's a large event, so looking forward to that. Any questions?
Busy.
Busy, busy, yeah, I left out a few things too, so. All right, Chris, take care.
Safe out there.
Good morning, today, July first, was our day for new office hours at Riley County. And even with the rain, we had six appointments at the treasurer's office at seven-thirty today. And at seven-fifteen, two people were standing out, thankfully under the awning, in the, in the deluge, waiting to get in. So, so far, so good with the office hours. And I've been sharing information all over the place, we have signs on the doors, social media, website changes, and I'm in the process of updating all the Google Business Profile hours. I've done, I think I've got everything for this building up to date, so people have the right hours and we're encouraging, so we'll see how the experiment goes. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioner Rich Barger, Riley County clerk. I want to remind everyone that Riley County Clerk's Office will no longer be a vendor for Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks permits. We have a lot of information out there on Riley County website on the different vendors in Riley County, where you can get all of those services provided. But of course, this is in direct relation to the next topic, the move of the Elections Division to one-fifteen North Fourth. The elections staff were the frontline customer service staff in our office. They moved last Thursday up to one-fifteen North Fourth on the fourth floor in new Elections Division offices that'll be, are greatly appreciated, commissioners provided. It'll allow much enhanced security for elections and just better overall workroom space for all the divisions of the clerk's office. So they are officially there, open for business. Anyone has any questions, feel, please feel free to get ahold of us. Don't know if commissioners have any questions. Okay, thank you.
So we need a motion. Move recess of the board of county commissioners and convene.
I would second that.
It's been seconded to recess of the board of county commission and reconvene as the board of county health. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good morning again, Julie goes with the health department, this is a request for approval to fill the medical reserve. Alright, good morning again, Julie goes with the Health Department, this is a request for approval to fill the Medical Reserve for Unit Leader Position. This has become vacant as of at the beginning of June, so we're looking to fill this and as a reminder, this is going to be possible through the RISE Grant. It's another acronym through NJO, um, only seventy one entities were awarded in Riley County that performs one of them. It's kind of an extension of a previous grant, um, so we're able to with those funds hire a per time MRC Unit Leader. So again, we're still looking to fill this position, salary and benefits are covered through that RISE Grant through June of twenty twenty five.
Then what?
It's always the question, yeah.
This is what I struggle with with some of these positions is they don't fit our full yearly timeframe there and are we, I mean.
There is a lot of talk about extending that, at least for another year, our um, liaison from KDHE has um, told us multiple times now. They have funding to be able to extend this possibly for another year, but again, just.
Another state works on the July first deadline, so this is the beginning of the the new state budget year, but. Um, it doesn't exactly work for what we're trying to do here, and that's, from my perspective, that's the most important thing.
Right, so we do have quite a few volunteers.
Time or full time on these positions, if you're only covering it for a year.
I think Julie's, what Julie was gonna say right now, I think it's important to understand this particular, the MRC unit. And you can go and talk about volunteer.
Yeah, so we do have quite a few volunteers um, waiting to be onboarded and just need to go through the the onboarding process, so we need to get them up and ready. So that they're, they're ready to go in in the case of an emergency.
So, so the MRC unit is supposed to run with volunteers, it's supposed to be something that you have core volunteers to respond. And in this position, ideally we'll get that, that core volunteers. Onboarded, initiated and started running, and so we're trying to get it going, um, and I think feel like if we can do that. And we can really get them mobilized, that we should be able to sustain in the future, which is the, which is the state's premise on this.
This is just a startup position, is that the idea, isn't it, you said there used to be one, but now it kind of faded away.
We used to have an MRC um, unit long before I came into this position, but yeah, it just kind of faded away, we really could have used them during the pandemic. Coming in handy, but now that's.
The kickoff of them starting again, because they saw the value of that, yeah.
So yeah, hopefully once we get them all onboarded and trained, um, it will be something that can sustain itself um, in the future, that's what we're going to get this kickstarted.
And that model, it isn't what we've heard of, that's kind of the same model that the American Red Cross works on and in that way, you basically have one. Pay person, which we've got staff, but then you have these leaders that you en- enable and they should be able to run the program, we can just.
But for six months out of the year.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we're still blocking till just June of twenty five, I mean, what about the rest of twenty five?
Well, the position, yeah, so that's the point, like this position should be mobilizing our volunteers and getting volunteer leadership and so. I mean, if they continue to fund it, but I, I guess I don't foresee us asking for funding to continue this position. The ideal is to get it standard and running on its own, correct. And if, and if that do.
Following something here, then, I mean, don't you need a leader to do that consistently or just six months out of the year?
Well, the.
That's for a year, could start it right now.
Yeah, and then the point is, is to enable that group to lead itself, and you do have. Resources, you know, so like Skylar John works closely with this. Um, so she would continue, but she wouldn't have to be the one coordinating, organizing and and mobilizing those, those volunteers. Um, similar to, again, like the Red Cross is run by volunteer leaders. And so someone, you try to get these volunteers who are a little bit stronger and get the program understanding and guide them to become the leader.
Motion.
Yeah, you have a, you have a spot, it says it's in, in the office, they're be housed in the, you have a spot for that person.
Yeah, right by Skylar's office.
So you're basically looking for a volunteer coordinator. Yeah, that's what it is, yes. Yeah, I mean, they call it the MRC and the MRC Unit Leader and that's what we're, you know, that's the program. So that's what we're asking for that physician title, but that's what it is, it's a volunteer coordinator. And I, I guess I'm a big advocate of the value of these volunteer services and I do think, I know. That these programs can be run by strong volunteer leadership, we have, don't have it functioning at this point. Hard to find, it's hard to find people that have that ability to recruit volunteers and to keep it going. You're not wrong, it's hard to find the people and then you have to match them with the right amount of expectations and opportunity, right? Because I don't want to waste my time as volunteer if I'm not effective, but I also don't want to be overwhelmed by a volunteer if there's too much to do, so. It's a lot to manage and that's the ideal of this, to get it going and identify those people and their niches and. Make it run, I'm not, I, I mean, I'm not saying it's the only way to do things, that just, that's just the idea of this grant. Well, it's a. Models that a lot of churches use to. Yeah, yeah. So it's very similar to that, hire a part time person to get it going and then it keeps. I think a lot of nonprofits use this type of model, we're not used to it and it is, I mean, it is doable by volunteer. We just have it. Yeah, you have to get it going. Well, I would make a uh, motion um, to approve the request from Board of Health to hotfill the Chemptory Part Time MRC Unit Leader Position. Through June of twenty twenty five.
Second.
It moves in secondary, the Board of Health approved the request to fill the part time MRC Unit Leader Position through June of twenty twenty five, all in favor.
Thank you Julie.
Next Commissioner, you have Mr. Bob Ite. Making a motion, getting this done, I'll make a motion coming out first.
I'll make a motion to um, recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
It's gonna move in secondary recess to the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commission, all in favor. I had trouble opening the other.
It was too giant. Uh, well, I had to.
Go ahead Bob.
Thank you sir, good morning folks. Uh, representing the Lynn A. Blencky Trust and Blencky Enterprises LLC. Lynn Blencky has made application with Riley County Planning and Development requesting approval to rezone. A parcel of land from AG and the football district to PUD planned unit development and plant parcel into three lots. The forty seven point two acre subject site is generally located approximately thirty three hundred and forty five feet east of Marlet Avenue. On the north side of Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Their property also happens to be located in sections twenty one and twenty two, township nine range seven, in Grant, Manhattan and Wildcat Townships. So it just happens to be.
Wow, that's.
They may have some rediscovering.
Makes it fun for tax purposes, especially when lines go through.
Yeah, and then that's, I'll, I'll get to that. It's uh, complicated as it sounds, it's, it's very uh, simple replat. Simple plat for three lots, but there's a lot of complexities to this. I lined up the uh, successful residential development of Peterson Ranch off to the west. Uh, he, the applicant decided not to immediately pursue Peterson Ranch Unit Two. Uh, he decided to focus on the parcel on which his home is located, along with some surrounding property and develop it into three very low density. Single family residential blocks. Uh, if the request is approved, the applicant intends to file restrictive, restrictive covenants to accompany the final plat property. That portion of the subject uh, site located in Manhattan Township has been zoned agricultural since nineteen fifty one. Those portions of the subject site located in Grant and Wildcat Townships have been zoned agricultural since nineteen fifty eight. Uh, there are no variances, conditional uses or special uses associated with the site. The site is positioned between three other PUDs and manufacturing home park.
So where, excuse me, where is the line between the two uh, townships? Show me.
Right here. There's, there's uh, there's one line here and one line here.
Really?
Yeah, so Grant North and then there's Wildcat and then down over here. And so uh, I want to kind of skip ahead on that so I can kind of. The applicant and 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 staff has met with at the appraiser's office. And uh, talked over what needed to happen here. And even though that uh, you'll see in the plat map, there's going to be certain lines. Uh, drawn across those section lines and there's one section line by the way, and then the township line. Uh, but each one of those parcels are going to be legally described separately and there'll be texts according. Not as a single lot and we'll try to, try to jive and reconcile the, you know, the two taxing districts, that's not happening. The other thing that's very accommodating, very uh, cooperative. Uh, the other thing on this is, you'll see in the PUD, there's building envelopes. And uh, if the building envelopes will make sure though, that the development doesn't have the housing, one taxing unit and the. Accessories structure and another, again, that's uh, that's thought of by the applicant, very, you know, forward thinking. So it doesn't create a problem. So, um. Going on, uh, the Riley County Fire District, uh, number one will continue to serve the site. The nearest county fire station, the Tunnel Creek Fire Station located at fifty twenty Tunnel Creek Boulevard. And with the way this development is laying out, uh, these, there's an existing driveway that comes up through here and I'll show you this a little. Bigger of a map so you're able to see it. Uh, Thomas Word Road uh, ends at the cul-de-sac here, that cul-de-sac will be, uh, will be extended. Into the, to serve the, the north two lots available of this development, the seventh, the third southernmost lot. Will be served by a big driveway, that driveway that goes through here, it goes through the property, connects back down to Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Will create a loop. And fire uh, districts will loop instead of. Yeah, cul-de-sacs, so that was, that's kind of a, I think, an unseen um, side benefit for this, but here we go. So again, as complicated as this looks, it's really fairly simple. Uh, the north here, there's an extension up here north, um, do you want to see that, okay, I guess. It's very nice, uh, the extension of uh, Thomas Word Road, the cul-de-sac over here. And the driveway, as you'll see in these dashed lines, those driveways have to be shown on the plat now to the driveway stands of Riley County. Here's the driveway that comes off that cul-de-sac, so the lot one. The new extension went over to lot two, because this is where his house is currently located. With the existing driveway coming across and wrapping around back down to Tunnel Creek Boulevard. Uh, so uh, lot three, well, the, the existing driveway will actually serve lot three. Uh, a new driveway will be built, paired with the existing driveway to serve, continue to serve, I should say, lot two where the house is. And lot one. So that's where that's at, you know, I, I probably just explained what I was going to say, I want to make sure. So again, this is combined preliminary, uh, development plan and preliminary plat of the property, which is allowed through our land development regulations. Showing the new boundaries of each lot, the lots are sequentially numbered from north to south, one through three. Proposed lot one and three are vacant, while uh, proposed lot two has been developed with a single family residence. Built approximately nineteen ninety four and uh, with several outbuildings. All existing structures are shown and accounted for on the development plan, uh, the initial plan was to locate the westernmost accessory structure. Showing on proposed lot two on lot three. But without an existing principal structure on lot three, or proposed lot three, it would violate the subdivision regulations and couldn't uh. Create, uh, take action to go into violation. So does the property remain as part of proposed lot two, that's why you see this portion over here. And it goes all the way up here, uh, is connected to this over here. So here is lot three, right here. Uh, it's kind of inset to lot two. These, these accessory structures, as you, you see here, is all one piece. And these accessory structures over here actually go to this house right here. Um. What the applicant wanted to do is set it up, so this would be all on one lot and build the house later. Uh, and unfortunately, that kind of, the regulations stopped after that. So this is what he's planning on doing and at some point, if, if the uh, if a new house gets built on lot three. A boundary line adjustment to this line here can be moved to here to make this all lot three. And uh, again, if this is proved, that of course would have to go through the amendment process and so. So it's possible at some point in the future after house is constructed on lot three, this could happen. Proposed lots one and two will have direct access to Thomas Word Road, as I mentioned. Uh, it's a tussling gravel road maintained by Wobong Township. The applicant is proposing to extend Thomas Word Road easterly to serve as the primary internal street of that subdivision. Since lots one and two will be utilized in shared entrance, not shared driveways, the extension of Thomas Word Road. Will not be largely paid as per the requirements of the Riley County uh, Standard Roadway Design and Planted Subdivisions. Lot three will be served by Tunnel Creek Boulevard, as mentioned, a paved three lane state highway via an existing driveway. No newer existing bridges are included with this request. Okay, so all lots will be served by rural water and some type of onsite sanitary sewer. Riley County's Environment Health Tech has already reviewed the request and found it being compliant with the sanitary code. Then gone out and done inspections on the site and determined that onsite systems can work at this locations. Again, with that type, they, they tried to go with the in-ground system first. Either standard or an alternative, and if that doesn't work, then we'll look at, of course, they have to have meet the. Uh, minimum acreage of three acres, each lot does that. Um, so, um. The building setbacks for each lot is predetermined by the building envelopes. Shown on the development plan with the requirement that all buildings occur within the boundaries of the envelopes. As mentioned previously, our Riley County Fire District will serve the site at Tunnel Creek Fire Station located at forty one twenty eight Highway thirteen. Will serve as the primary responder to the site, emergency turnarounds have been included approximately every thousand feet along Thomas Word Road. Initially, uh, one uh, on lot two and one on lot four of Peterson Ranch Unit One. Existing cul-de-sac will, terminus, terminus will not be vacated. With construction of the extended cul-de-sac for Thomas Word Road in order to allow it to continue as, as a turnaround for emergency vehicles. Stamp pipe is also located um, on the north side, I believe it's the north side of the existing cul-de-sac. Um, I, I know uh, you, you pointed it out, it's about in this location.
A little bit further to the east.
Right over here.
Down in that area.
Okay, that's where that, uh, and that stamp pipe is uh, connected to, I believe it's a six inch rural water district uh, main. And that's uh, for twelve, I have uh, uh, fire uh, engines and and equipment to fill up the tanks. Have fighting fire, so, so that's. And so again, the uh, subject site is located within five road miles of the fire station. That portion of the unplanted tracting north of the quarter section, this part up here. Will remain unplanted and undeveloped at this time. They're going through, these are the, the uses uh, being proposed with this PUD, like to read these for the benefit of the board and the general public. It gets specific uh, as per lot. It's not just generally applied, most of the stuff is not generally applied to all three lots. So lots one and two or lots one and three will have specific criteria versus the other. So this is a general one, single family residences, this is what the intent is of the uh, the PUD. At short term rentals and defined by the Riley County Land Development Regulations. Shall be subject to the licensing requirements found in section five point two E specific standards of said regulations. Accessory apartment as per section five point two E specific standards of the Riley County Land Development Regulations except. Such accessory apartment shall only be allowed in the principal building. Regulations allow them to be in uh, over accessible or in accessory structures as well, it's like uh, over the garage, a lot, or something like that. And this, he wants to be in more specific, only to allow them in the principal building. Special events type one, again, there's a lot more flexibility in the regulations, uh, the applicant wants to tighten that one up. So uh, the type one uh, will be limited to private gatherings, including weddings, receptions, family reunions, things like that. And limited to several such events per calendar year, type one special events that are open to the general public. Which again, this is allowed through the regulations, whether or not an, or admission or entrance fee is charged or commercial activity is conducted, shall be prohibited. Number five, home occupations as per section five point five, home occupations L D R. Religious and ministerial gatherings, open space, wealthy trails, and private recreational uses. Some stuff looks like it's pretty, uh, well, why would we even need to get specific on that? He wants to make sure it's in there. Just in case. So this is a list of permitted structures, this is where it gets a little bit more specific. Single-family development, that's all three, so use limitations, and I'll look into those in a moment. Accessory structures as follows, lots one and three shall be subject to sections five point three point B and five point three point C. Of the L D R, except the total cumulative floor area calculated per lot size shall be as listed for the S F one zoning district. In table five dash two, reason for that is that table does list P U D, so making a reference to it and. You're looking at P U D, it's not there, or, or picking this one, because it's a large lot, single-family residential zoning district. Lot two shall be subject to the section, uh, to sections five point three point B and five point three point C of the Riley County. L D R, except the number of buildings and maximum floor area shall be as follows. And this is to accommodate the existing lot two, which happens to have more than the, the, the numbers required. So the P U D is gonna factor those in here. And that's, that's the accessory structures on lot two, current. Uh, lot one and three will be subject to the, uh, the, how the, the regulations are ready. So buildings used solely for the, uh, housing livestock or horses shall be subject to. Section five point three point C point six of the Riley County Land Development Regulations that's, uh, allow the, uh. Just because they have this many, uh, at, or, uh, the, uh, accessory structures doesn't preclude them to have the ability to. Amateur radio antenna on lots two and three only. Not commercial solar energy conversion system, private. One small energy conversion system, again, private, lots two and three only, with a maximum height of seventy feet. Uh, private playgrounds, swimming pools, and here's your general notes. Lots one and two shall have direct access to Thomas Ward Road, the cul-de-sac, their shared entrance, so that's clear. Lot three shall have direct access down to the Tull Creek Boulevard. Two driveways for lots one and two shall be subject to the requirements of the driveway standards in the unincorporated area of Riley County, Kansas. Driveway serving lot three is existing and shall not be subject to the aforementioned driveway standards. So, uh, when the, uh, the, the way it goes, it's when a building permit gets issued for, uh. A particular lot, that's when the driveway standards have to go into play and they have to, in order to get a certificate of occupancy for that house. They have to make sure that the driveway is done and inspected by public workers.
Um, this wasn't, uh, that Thomas Ward Road didn't re, we require that to be paved? And if that's extended through there, would that not, not relate to that?
No, no. Uh, you could think, but that's not how it worked, that's not how it's worded in that, that they, uh. Running standards and the, the road design standards of the padded areas, it's not how it's worded. Uh, so the subdivision has to, uh, but a public or a paved road unless. And that's where it came through, um, lots one and two, um, they don't have to, they're not held to that standard. Uh, if, uh, they're, they have a shared entrance. So it's a two-lot subdivision, if they had separate entrances onto Thomas Ward Road, yeah, that would have to be paid. That wouldn't have to, but that, that, that piece that, that, that connects to the rest of Thomas Ward Road. The rest of Thomas Ward Road would have to be paid. So, I don't know, it's a little odd, and, uh. Yeah, again, we, we have the applicant about, uh, I believe that there's, uh, and, and he can speak to this, uh, when he comes up. There, uh, is a, I believe he's forming a pavement benefit district at some point for the rest of that. And okay, would we want to extend it, the extension on a small bit, but it looks so small on the map, but it's quite a bit. And that would be an extra hundred thousand dollars or something.
Per lot or all together?
For the road itself.
Or the road is not per lot.
Yeah.
Hundred, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it's a lot. So lots one, two, and three shall be served by rural water district, as I mentioned, uh, lots and, uh. Lots and all uses there and shall be in plan, standard, current code, these are all the P U D. Uh, or lots, shall be located within the building envelope, as shown. All utilities shall be underground. Now, proposed lighting shall have directional control or, or appropriate cutoffs to minimize the, uh, light. Plus, accessory structures used solely for medical purposes shall be exempt from the maximum floor calculations or, uh, maximum number of requirements. Uh, we wanted to make sure that was clear on here, so people wouldn't, uh, they come in and ask. It's clear. If, uh, if entrance pipe is needed to access control. It works with these standards broadly designed by the subdivisions. There's the use limitations. One site built to the family house, with or without accessory apartment per lot, manufacturer homes. Large homes, tiny homes, or mobile homes shall be prohibited, stock animals, such as horses, cows, sheep, and so on. Uh, shall be limited to five per lot poultry, uh, shall be limited to, well, chickens, ducks, skinnies, or any combination, roosters shall be prohibited. Make your services centers such as shall be prohibited, group homes as defined by the Riley County Land Development Regulations shall be prohibited. Businesses involving equine feeding, riding, or roping activities shall be prohibited. Nurseries or gardens intended to yield fruits, vegetables, or so on. Uh, or to be processed into beverages or food products for sale shall be prohibited. So it stops the manufacturing, the business of, you know, popping up. By commercial parks, playgrounds, and all horses, swimming pools, and so on, shall be prohibited. Uh, so it really tight, tightens it down to just a residential, private residential area, that's it, low density. Yeah, they had prepared a set of restrictive covenants that will be filed along with the final patent for proposed development. With the intent of formulating a homeowners association, schedule of improvements is quite quick. Uh, construction of the extension of Thomas Ward Road, with cul-de-sac as per Riley County, uh, standards for roadway design. But everything, construction of the new driveway on lot two, that has to be done in conjunction, because that house is already existing. Year twenty twenty-four to twenty-six, construction of residence on lot three, that could be his, by the way. And year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight, construction of residence on and driveway on lot one. And there is the final development plan. Sure. This is probably, uh, the new boundaries of each lot, the applicant, which is to run preliminary, uh, development and final development plan concurrently. Uh, there are no changes or modifications between the preliminary and final, resulting in the final plan to be in substantial performance with the, the preliminary development plan. This is the final plat of the property, again, no changes from the preliminary. Uh, the request was reviewed with the, uh, twenty fifteen Manhattan urban area comprehensive plan. Subject site is located within the northwest planning area, more specifically the west U S twenty-four special planning area, which states. Good. The, beyond the first tier of properties, notice in the highlight, uh, uh, north of U S twenty-four. Uses within the potential growth area are intended to be primarily low-density rural residential. So the, the future land use map projects the majority of the subject, uh, site for rural residential use shown here in light yellow. The special planning area is depicted in mid-green with yellow stripes. The request is in general performance with the goals and objectives of the plan. The, uh, request was also reviewed with the two thousand nine Vision twenty twenty-five Riley County Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the development guidance system, chapter twelve. The first element of the D G S is conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan. Site is located in an area projected for residential use, although the such property is not located within a designated golden area. The future land use map indicates that the subject site is located within a potential long-term growth area. And to get a proper, for preparation of a detailed area plan. The detailed area plan in this case is the proposed residential prime unit development. Um. So, the third element of the development guidance system is the vanity, which inside assessment, at least, sure. This site scored fairly well on the L A S S score, uh, a total of forty-five thirty-four, which is strong for development. And finally, number four, the, uh, hardship on the landowner, the applicant did not express. That makes unnecessary hardship of being incurred if the project were to be denied. So, yeah, with that, so analysis, the request to replat and, or to plat and rezone of such properties consistent with goals and objectives of both plans. So on June tenth of this year, the Riley County Planning Board ordered and recommended to the board of county commissioners. To approve the request to rezonate tract of land from A G Agricultural District to P U D Planned Unit Development. As it was found to be in general performance with the comprehensive plan. The board also approved the current, uh, concurrent plat of Black Edition Unit Three. As it was found to meet the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations and Riley County Sanitary Code. Staff recommends that the board of county commissioners approve the request to rezonate tract of land from A G Agricultural, uh, District. To planning unit development, that it was found to be in general performance with the comprehensive plan. Staff also recommends that the board of county commissioners acknowledge the approved final plat. Black Edition Unit Three, except if any, where the licenses are shown to be dedicated on the final plat. That's all for me, with my presentation, if you have any questions for me. Glad to field those questions.
Are all those lots in that other subdivision, are they all full, or are they all built on?
Uh, seven are, uh, built on and occupied, one under construction. And the eighth one, the ninth one has, uh, uh, submitted plans to start, uh, this month.
So there will be a lot of usage to the loop and, and the new driveway through there.
I had some questions, but you answered them as you want, this was hard to follow.
This thing.
Going too fast.
No, no, I know, I said, no, what I mean, trying to look at it myself, I was, couldn't figure out some of that stuff, but you can explain why all that, why it is like this. So.
It is, it's a tough one, uh, like you said, it's three-lot subdivision. Zone one back to residential, really, that's the, it boils down to that. And we're talking about one house on each lot, and one of those houses is already there. So that's the simple part, the rest of it was, it's okay.
Make sure you give yourself enough time to explain that next time. Fifteen minutes wasn't gonna cover that.
Okay, sure.
It's pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of these aren't this complicated.
Most of them are, but. In fact, I'm probably gonna have to have you reschedule Russell. Your time since we're. Thirty-two people's time here.
I would move to sign resolution, note seven oh one twenty-four, approving the request to rezonate. No, rezoned, uh, the planted tract from A G Agricultural District to P U D Planned Unit Development.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second into, uh, sign resolution zero seven zero one two four, approving the request to rezonate unplanted tract. From A G Agricultural District to P U D Planned Unit Development, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
All three signed, please.
And we have, you know, a couple of my orders out here for you to sign as we all continue.
I'll go ahead and make. We'll sign on this, move the res, move to approve resolution, oh, seven oh one twenty-four, acknowledging the approved. Final plat of Black Edition Unit Three and accept any easements, rights, or ways or licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat.
I would second that.
They move to approve resolution zero seven zero one two four, acknowledging the final, um. Uh, excuse me, acknowledging the approved final plat for the Black Edition Unit Three. Except any easements, rights, or ways or licenses as shown to be dedicated on the final plat, all those in favor?
All right.
All right.
And I noticed on there that this update was for March.
Uh, that was for.
Agenda, Martin.
See some steam. Mm-hmm, over there.
Yes.
Yeah, he's drawing one. Bar one, spring ball one.
So, I missed the whole bunch. So that's not here.
I would not, I would accept that due. John has that problem all the time.
Very touchy. It's not rea-staffed, is it? It changes it to slider bar.
I, I don't want you to upgrade this to digital, just to clarify.
You know what?
Want it to be user-friendly.
It's a castle, I have to put it. I think it has one speed, actually.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it's changed.
Fast. So, also, Steve, you're fine, as you call on, I understand, to understand your, I would run a short on time, commissioners, the one question I would like to ask is. When would be a good time to schedule a ribbon cut? Station one or two down the action? Would you like to do that after a commission meeting, or maybe earlier, before a commission meeting, when it was cooler? Um, or on a day that's not a commission?
After, probably would be better. And then maybe, uh, you can't get away on days of it, then.
It will be formed.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be silverly to get.
Um, unless you wanna do like a Friday, I mean.
That usually works for me, just.
Okay, you want me to look at a Friday and when others can be there, instead of D N?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Usually, catch up.
Um, no, don't send it to commissioners.
Send it, send it out to, I guess, Cindy, right?
Yeah, Cindy will get it arranged with them.
Okay, all right, we'll target that Friday morning, eight, eight A M?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll work. Okay, all right, thanks.
Or actually.
Yeah.
Jason from the city isn't here, so if you wanna go ahead and go through yours.
Oh, great.
Find us while you're here, we'll take it. I thought you were gonna go through like March and April and June, as I said, so I figured it's gonna take a while.
You don't have to pass Saturday, please. So, uh, you got my report for June, uh. That, what I'm passing around there is an example of the, uh. Uh, stations, signs that we're getting, we got grant money, of anonymous grant paid for those. We're gonna put a sign similar to that at each fire station. Um, a lot of them do not have signage, um, as of now, so that will, uh, improve that greatly. So, uh, I'll skip over some of the stuff that isn't quite as important. Obviously, we're still dealing with our cyber, we have the radios, both have more reports soon on that, um. Getting I T upgrades to the mobile phone networks, uh. I'm not certified as manager for another two years. We've, I worked with R C P D on the Homeland Security Project, uh, to get some funding, finish some training. Um, after our. Past two, three years' experience with the fires on the silt flats. On the core visionary slash wildlife and parks ground, we're working on a automatic checklist, myself and Lorial. Things we should do as soon as we hear there's a fire on the silt flats, and just things we need to just automatically put on motion, whether it's one acre or ten acres to start out with. Um. But, uh, it isn't on my report, because it came out. But uh, it isn't on my report because it came out Friday night, I was able to keep pushing and keep pushing the storm on top of Commissioner McKinley. Keep it down south, but it didn't uh provide too much uh displeasure. Riley County kept kind of on the south line down their I seventy, so.
Of course, it did bring up the one thing that seems to be um more and more of a problem is. The outdoor warning system and what that is and what that's not. I don't know what we can do there, I um.
So what I've heard is that uh. Well, Long Island County had issues with theirs. Theirs went off without them knowing. And potentially two locations, Green Valley and that.
Yeah.
Olds.
Yeah.
I know I got a call that said the PD officer said, I heard the sign going off, and I said, we didn't sound it. And they're like, oh, maybe it's coming across from Oldsburg. It turns out.
That's what it was.
So, you know, on our part, we're working as they should.
I always say it's better to be safe than to be sorry, but I mean. I, I don't know what you can do to educate the public better on that's an outdoor warning system and not just.
Right.
It's for tornadoes too, but it's for imminent weather and severe conditions and how that.
Could possibly even use for non-severe weather issues.
Rarely does it. We've done it, and we've done it. As far as I know, going all the way back to two thousand and eight, it's not a new concept.
Right.
So, so.
Anyway, um, so as a result of the big fire, we've had multiple, multiple agency meetings. You try and figure out how to better handle that in the future and if there is any mitigation. Uh, activities that could be done by combination of the core and wildlife and parks and three counties and the state of development. Were discussions, I, I think there will be. Good things come, nobody has the magic answer, you know, of course, it's just a tough situation, so. I had a plenty of cash round, round reports and uh extinguisher. Um, we have made some progress on the University Park Agreement, so that is. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thanks.
You caught up just like that. Next question, we have Steve Shirley at ten forty-five. Ambulance.
Did we miss?
You snuck it.
That's okay.
Um, a good time to mention, I got an email this morning. Um, question was asked about when Mill Creek Bridge was gonna open. I just sent an email out on that, contractors planning to have the roadway open sometime in late July and they're gonna start removing the shoe fly shortly. I don't know what the, yeah, I don't know what the issue is, but that's what they're playing, so let's spread the word around on that. Paul, it's just thanks to. Eight oh four number caller access code that should bring you back, because she's got a, she's got your number bridge to mind to make it work.
Got you. Thanks for heads up.
It's both the presenters.
Yeah.
No, that was Bob Isaac. The guy sitting there.
And that's helped by the county shifts.
Mm-hmm, just kind of across, across into the east a little.
How do they put the housing in there? Have they already started?
Oh yeah, absolutely. Like you said, there's seven people living there already.
He's got three in the law, so.
Upper end housing.
You moving there?
No way. On my map permanently.
One property back.
Huh, exactly.
Not one of the special, but they have specialists in the county.
Yeah, they will once they pave that road.
Is it private road or condition?
Uh, private. It may be eventually, though. I, I think it is a township road, so it's a township road.
It's one of the things that I forgot to ask about this one, who's responsible for seeing drive on the west side of town, Mr. Reason. If you know where Cooks in the cake.
He would know.
He's in charge.
Mr. Ellerman's in charge of everything.
I'm gonna try to tear a lot of stuff up that train. Because the county are solely responsible for the. Just sitting until the time. People are sitting until the time that they need to take over down. I've been down for a little ones. They're right. It's not so bad coming in. On the down, on the city side, but leaving town is like. You know, but that's no different than the city side.
Little city street.
Well. I assume it gets a lot of traffic, I think.
Those are probably one of our biggest, well, yes, I've seen it.
I would.
County's biggest.
I would think so, just because of the people who are heading for the working. It's just, I'm not there that early, but. You don't have a primary vote, do you?
I don't have any of those.
Easiest election you've ever measured.
I guess. Now what do I do?
Don't have to raise any money, don't have to spend any money.
Well, I've already raised some money.
No.
Because I anticipated having.
But that didn't happen.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, so filed in March, so anticipating, well, you never know, but. But uh, I'm gonna, you know, find ways to spend it, I'm sure, you know, I'll do some door to door and some events and that kind of thing. It won't be as extensive as twenty, twenty twenty was, yeah. Of course, that was COVID too, that was a tough campaign. Great, it's the same way, he doesn't have an.
Any pictures from Biden on this?
I've had one.
Well, nobody must be a terrorist.
So not.
Nobody will.
Must go terribly upset out of here.
I guess not. Something good.
So I hope he's doing that.
Yeah.
It's just not.
I know when he's gonna ask his question. Uh, we uh.
Moved on.
I was gonna say, we had you on the schedule for ten fifteen, Jason.
Who did?
Yeah.
I'm late, Justin. My apologies.
Get everybody's back, I'll give you fifteen minutes or however long you need.
I apologize.
Jason never needs fifteen minutes.
The gallery has already suggested you snuff it. Yeah, that kind of rolling up street for you.
Hi, Jason.
You can go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I apologize, I thought it was ten thirty. Think you were looking for updates concerning road construction. Probably the most visible still, Dennison, Kimball, uh, still targeting to have that completed. And opened up by the time football season rolls around for K-State. Uh, North Manhattan is coming along really well, uh, it'd be driven down recently between. Blue Mont and Clapton, we've seen the signal at arms over the roadway. Um, that coordination will function uh for students and vehicles in a much more concerted way. Whereas before they would walk up to those intersections, push the button. Sometimes push the button and just walk right out into the street. Uh, it'll function a lot like it does on Dennison, next to Good Now. Uh, where they have to actually push a button, wait for the signal, and the vehicles are running on green, yellow, and red as well, so. Pedestrians will all move at one time across hopefully, and then vehicles will have their turn. Uh, we think that'll create a much safer environment, that's part of the City University funding that we have. But we're excited for that corridor to be open and accessible at the beginning of this fall as well. We're in the process of bidding out a lot of work on Anderson Avenue. Uh, west of Anderson, um, Setchild to Reese will be a complete removal, replacement of that asphalt. We'll start that in September-ish, hopefully be done by the end of the year. About the time Kimball and Dennison open will be really launching into Anderson Avenue, so most traffic's gonna divert itself. Uh, to that east-west corridor along Kimball to avoid Anderson. We're also bidding out a project, should have it awarded by the end of the year. For Anderson Avenue, basically from Wesley to campus, there's a, there's a water line, it's some other infrastructure we need to put in. But it'll be a removal and replacement. There'll probably be about three phases, so that project will be a good eighteen months. Of disruption on Anderson. Uh, I, I probably have more sensitivity to the residents who live along Anderson, the rest of us just using it to cut through. Um, Kimball, Clapton, Fort Riley Boulevard, still be able to move you east and west. But Anderson, if uh you were part of its travel ways over the winter and the spring, not an area you want to go back to. Uh, obviously, we were teaming up these larger projects and our rough winter uh caught us a little bit early, so. Uh, both of those projects again should get started soon. And uh, once we're complete there, it'd be a, a great benefit back to the community. Aggieville, we'll have some conversations with the commission in the next couple of months. Uh, looked into who works and contracts to go ahead and bury and, and finish the utility work in the alleys. Between the eleven hundred block and North Manhattan, just south of Moro. We'll also talk about moving forward with Twelve Street uh between Moro and Laramie. The developers got some updates for the, the commission, which I think they'll provide on July sixteenth. As how private development is progressing. Uh, we'll look to take that next step on infrastructure, possibly starting construction early next year on Twelve Street. So. As far as infrastructure goes, in major uh construction at this point in time, unless you have questions, somewhere the place in town. We'll move on to the uh next topic of uh sales tax and aquatic center. Uh, we provided the commission a pretty good overview last Tuesday, um. I don't, I don't, at this point in time, I think it's, it's kind of a toss-up as to whether or not this question is gonna surface again. Two commissioners clearly said they didn't want it, didn't think it would pass. Um, the other three were fairly silent on the topic, um. So we'll, we'll continue to seek guidance and feedback from the commission on that strategy. Uh, the sales tax was primarily to carve off park and recreation from the general fund, funded independently. You give it enough revenue for a capital improvement program, we put a clue indoor aquatics. Um, the point two five that's out there right now to build direct centers and CECO. Is about to, we've got a couple more years on it, but it'll basically. Generate enough revenue to pay for the remainder of CECO improvements, which we should start early next year. Uh, the sales tax will call that point two five possibly early or just let it run, kind of depends how they want to structure that question. Though we're aware it needs to be done by August in order to make the bill that we're valid. Uh, it's July first, I just don't sense there's a lot of momentum there, but. Anything can happen in sixty days, we'll figure out what they want to do and, and adjust accordingly. Um, it kind of ties into the budget update, um. Revenues are, are fairly flat for us, uh, the commission reduced the mill levy by three mils last year for the city. Taking it from fifty-two mils to forty-eight point nine. Sales tax, uh, we had really good years in twenty-two and twenty-three, they have flattened, they have not dipped a little bit. In the first five months of, of the year. So we're um, we're in a position where we're talking with them about. Do you want to look at additional revenues in a different area, or do you want to explore? Uh, some, some cuts in services and, and drawing back uh some of the advances we've made in the last couple of years. A little bit of feedback there in terms of exploring other opportunities as well, um. There could be some revenues diverted from one area to another. Uh, we'll continue to look for that feedback from the commission in, in the next couple of months. Um, we have a lot, we have a significant amount of revenue coming in on the seven, seventy percent of the, the point five that passed in twenty twenty. That took effect in twenty twenty-three. That revenue is headed towards upon an interest, that's really a lot of the revenue we'll need for North New York's border or an aggieville that isn't supported by another revenue stream. Uh, that, that will continue to be incurred and that service retired over the next ten, twelve years. So that's, that type of revenue is stockpiling at the moment and will be used uh throughout the next decade. So we'll, again, we'll continue to talk with the commission about their budgeting approaches. Obviously, revenue neutral rate, have a notice, the community's due here in the middle of July. And then we'll have a couple of hearings in September to finalize and adopt a budget for twenty point five. City manager recruitment, uh, we started with fifty applicants, we're down to ten. They have phone interviews and Zoom Teams meetings this week. July twenty-second, July twenty-third will be the in-person. So we could have, you know, an offer and a contract on the agenda uh early August. I would imagine individual would need thirty to sixty days with their current employer. So he's probably looking at a September, October timeframe for a start date for that individual. Believe those are the four topics requested. Any other comments or questions or topics you'd like me to address this week?
No, I think you covered it.
All right. Well, I apologize again for my tardiness.
It's okay.
Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, ten forty-five, we have Stephen Shirley.
Do you know, are you familiar with that statue?
It's about thickness of those. I believe.
Right, they have to have so many, the signatures they had, they gotta validate.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, I did not.
Is it, but that's, that's obviously a thing.
Have it down.
Typically on a somewhat obvious, you know what percentage.
Each statue's different for each subject matter. But now without looking specifics at, you know, what percentage based on.
Most people are aware that's even a visual.
Yeah, I was surprised when I didn't saw it. Just focus right now on compliance on or section requirements for publication hearings. Yeah, but no, I did see it. I'm here about it. Easy Google, I'm sure on that subject.
So always put in the right.
I had a, they had my name spelled on it.
Oh, that's good.
That's not good.
Yeah, really. Yeah, I have no idea. I didn't miss that up. I'd seen that. I didn't, I think you're, I didn't reach it, I didn't think they were interested in selling anything.
Yeah, or isn't.
Twenty-two. Pistol. And that's a way to show.
No, that is. Run wild, be free. Thank you. It's always an option.
Yeah, I mean. It's just, I'm always thinking, if those guys can sell those, we're going to.
Well, if they haven't sold it yet, that's asking.
That's something we're all selling too.
Been saying that for a long time. Since I got here, I said, that's good.
So can I introduce Rachel? They have one minute, right?
They have an introduction to me.
This is Rachel, so she's our new HR assistant. And so today's her first day, she's been here forty-five minutes and she's met everybody in the office building, so she's ready to go.
So hopefully she comes back tomorrow.
Gave her a really nice workspace, she's been dreaming about HR.
I have a good view from the window.
Yeah.
Oh, you have a.
Oh, you're not in this building then.
Like they worked out that, that area's cleared out.
Yeah, so I just wanted to have you get your base.
Welcome. Nice to meet you, welcome.
Let's see, there's a lot of space.
You don't say that very often either. Well, not, not, I don't know how you're going to guys are going to talk that.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Shirley, your praise is office and co-chair with Andy, the employee day committee. So we're going to do the employee day proposal here, so. Just kind of a little background, since two thousand and six, Riley County has dedicated the Indigenous Youth Day to their investment for the enrichment and training of Riley County employees. This year, Employee Day will be on October fourteenth. Since this is a mandatory, I emphasize mandatory, training day, all county offices are closed to the public. Employee Day is the only day that allows all of us to get together and spend valuable time with one another. This time together creates and strengthens department relationships and keeps our momentum going in a positive direction. So a little discussion, so Employee Day again will be held at the AMC Theaters. We got a lot of positive feedback with, you know, seating, the sound, everything like that, so it's going to be held there again. The vision and theme for this year is One Team. The proposed agenda for the day is also attached in, in the packet. Includes some required activities, some optional activities from seven forty-five through the morning to four P M. Just kind of some notes on the day, the seven forty-five arrival is optional, but it'll include a continental breakfast and coffee will be served. The morning session begins at eight A M, includes the keynote speaker Judy Favor, who's in the zone training. Judy's focus is on high performing and high functioning teams. I've experienced firsthand what Judy can provide. She's worked with the Crasers Department from December to May. In a matter of five months, she's created a culture that's improved our communication, conflict resolution, and made each other accountable. So in my humble opinion as well, what Judy teaches doesn't really translates into personal life as well, not only for the work environment, but also with, with the personal life. So just a lot of good, good information. So as we continue, so after the morning break, there's employee recognition, employee tenure, followed by breakout sessions that employees can choose from depending on which topics they find interesting. Let's County, I know speaking with AMC, there's going to be a little more variety, some salad options, those sort of things.
Say go rich.
Yes.
I'm the one that don't want just healthy snacks, being Mr. McKinley, so.
You know, if you lay out bacon, you put one piece of lettuce on it, that cancels the salad.
I take more bacon.
More bacon, you want more bacon.
More bacon. Bacon's delicious. So anyway, this year, the team building events may look a little different. We're going to have food all department together. Again, one team at Potter Hall. Activities run through team activities, competitions, fun events to build community within, again, our employee groups. And really the thought behind that was by holding activities at one location and puts the day's theme into action. And so again, department heads and talking with coworkers, they've really enjoyed the intermingling between departments and find that very valuable. So the fiscal impact, again, proposed budget is attached. The budget includes, again, the speakers for the keynote, breakout sessions, the venue, food refreshments, service awards and team building activities. The maximum cost for twenty-four will be twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, which is included in the general grant group budget in four twenty-four. That equates to about eighty-seven dollars and two cents per the expected number of employees, which I believe is about two fifty, two hundred and fifty. And so with that, really, we'll just kind of hold for any questions. But otherwise, we recommend for the commissioners to prepare the agenda and budget for the twenty-four Riley County Employee Day.
Find out how everyone together, because the department I went with last time. You know, we, we had a fun doing what we're doing, but they said, you know, we're all by ourselves. Why don't, you know, they'd like to do something with all, with the other departments instead of just within themselves, just to.
Exactly. And that's kind of, especially with the theme this year, it all kind of came together. And, and with Judy's, and even the other breakout sessions, really team, team oriented for, for everyone.
Not just your departments, but everyone. Right.
And I think we did some similar in nineteen, but COVID obviously kind of changed all that. Slide back that up.
So prior to twenty, you know, we were able to be at Farm Bureau. And we aren't, we don't fit in Farm Bureau anymore. And there are a lot of security issues to get in and through and for breakout sessions. So that was a challenge, trying to find a place that was needing things. So between AMC, the only other options we would have would be to have a hotel, like a conference center, which will raise the cost significantly.
That sounds good to me.
See, you didn't even need to play it.
Didn't help that, you know, that's.
It's in his mind, I can see.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Getting treasures off a student tags the other day, but she didn't have cookies there.
It'd be hard to keep up with that cookie tray, I'm sure.
Now, let's see, it's my turn. Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda and budget for the twenty twenty-four Riley County Employee Day.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the budget for the twenty twenty-four Riley County Employee Day. All paid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy Mang, it's at eleven oh five, goes to the break.
She's heading out to the parking lot, I don't know.
Why's she going to her car?
If you hear that, I'll think you're running out. I think she's going to be great, her mom.
I think I gave it to you.
You guys are.
Yeah, I've been for like three weeks, man.
Need to.
I mean, I'm sure it's a large company because back in the day, there wasn't that many population, but now.
Yeah.
And she's, she's excited and she's.
We'll grind her down.
Shush. We already told her to stay away from your office. I said, just, just let me have a.
Hotter tomorrow than cooler on Wednesday and eight this weekend.
Little cooler, Fourth of July for a change, kind of like.
It just rained, I wonder what.
Seems so odd to me that Randolph has theirs before Fourth's even here, you know? It's over already.
Well, I think they do, because they did it on the same weekend and just work with everybody else's.
Yeah.
Doesn't want me to go have theirs on the Fourth every?
They do.
Tomorrow rain, Thursday rain.
Yeah, the chances are.
Thirty percent, not much, but ninety-six.
Yeah, tomorrow's warm.
Tomorrow's ninety-two, two, three.
Did you know, man, there's been some years, even like last year, where, I mean, it was already up in the hundred degrees. So one of two things are going to happen, it's going to be a mild summer or it's going to come really late.
With that humidity, it seems.
Well, we've had some hot early.
Plants are all messed up, they don't know what season.
And you like the water.
Yeah.
Humans are all messed up, I don't think they know what the seasons are.
That's nice.
Yeah.
We're on a heaterizer now.
We want to constantly, please, just like you that. Just like last year.
And maybe that'd be just silly, but I thought it might be true. Let's get your big announcement today. When we get this five-star.
Yeah, I know. It's good news that the other five-star went to Oregon, it hasn't hurt us.
Yeah. And the other, I think from Kansas went someplace else too.
That's where he went, Oregon. Which was this guy's probably other first choice, because he was kind of just dreaming team from the video games. And I didn't realize, first of all. And I didn't realize, first of all, I didn't realize we had one five star Titan. Two, but the other guy is actually above the one we're getting as far as ratings, so to speak, but two five star Titans. Unreal.
No, that doesn't make sense if you think about it. I mean, we're Kansas boys.
They both coming here.
No, one's going to Oregon and we're finding out the other one today. I think the other one, I think the one getting this. I think the one that we're scouting is a better fit overall.
Just hope he comes.
Heard about the kid from Hayes.
Yeah, playing for Tennessee. Pretty impressive. Yeah. He does, but.
Yeah.
Greg, do you remember Bobby Randall?
Who?
Bobby Randall.
Name.
I had a case statement.
Yeah.
Late sixty, I assume you're old enough. Late sixty.
Yeah. I wasn't here, but I was in high school.
He's almost here. Slipped on the play about. MLB Twins, I think. My shit was pink, wasn't it?
Yeah.
She lives.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it's Paul or something on it.
No, there was no one Schmidt. There was some guy from Peak in that area. Was a pitcher. Making movies. Keep her of the numbers.
John, did they say what time that press conference is? Three?
Well, that was forty, it's in three here.
It's morning, I'm ready to hear. They're saying that'll be the start of the game today.
Oh, that would be four o'clock. A lot of solid.
We'll get him.
That's pretty good recruiting class for twenty five so far. I mean, it's been pretty solid.
Mm hmm. It has. Probably didn't hurt getting interest from these tight ends after seeing what we did with Senate.
Yeah. They had to get creative as kind of decent passing. We got a lot of depth now, but I mean.
I hope every every game I watch from Big Phil, they always have this least one static go to receiver and we just haven't. Long time.
Not since we had dead Brian with the Gringles, to be honest with you.
My gosh, why can't we get just one?
Yay.
Of course, Adrian Martinez.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
USFL MVP.
I was about to say he did good.
Yeah.
Did you print out that email? I don't have it.
Oh, yeah.
Most recent.
It was an invite, a calendar invite.
Okay, maybe that's where it's.
This is just a half an hour, so. It's eleven oh five. You go ahead.
Um, Amy Mangas, Riley County Register needs. Um, today I have a brief summary of revenue figures through three o'clock on June twenty sixth for twenty four with comparable year-to-date information for twenty twenty three. Um, as you can see, we are about a hundred and seventy million. Ahead in indebtedness compared to last year. And I believe about two hundred documents. More than this time last year, which directly reflects in our reporting fees. Um, flats have stayed pretty slow. We've only had ten this year for fourteen months. Compared to fifteen last year with twenty nine. Neither year has been real creative. Um. We're still re-scanning books two thirty nine through three thirty two, cross-training employees when available, training is available. Um, Joe and I attended the Registered Date Seminar in Emporia, June tenth through fourteenth. Uh, we had a pretty good turnout, um, between deputies and registraries. We had almost ninety attend.
Okay, I'll pull that up.
At the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay.
They have some very impressive fairgrounds.
Yeah.
I think that was my first time to Emporia that I recall, but they're very nice. Um.
You didn't go with us when we went down for the county officials deal in nineteen, did you?
Um. I think maybe not.
She was working.
Well, she was working.
Getting a few more of Debbie and.
I can't remember. That was a long time ago.
I can't either. That's why I.
I know. Both learning together. Some of our training opportunities at seminar, um, included a presentation on cybersecurity, which was very informative. And we had two employees from the Secretary of State's office, um, came to talk to our association about, um, remote online notaries and. In-person electronic notaries. They answered some of our questions, creating a lot more that they're supposed to get back to us on.
Hmm.
So. And then I'm still tracking the daily revenue loss due to fee changes and the elimination of the mortgage registration fee. And total revenue loss in twenty twenty four is two hundred and ninety eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. Which, you know, I've been tracking eleven words this year, and I'm also recreating last year. And their losses are even more impressive than ours, so.
Impressive or unimpressive?
They're impressive in size. So. I didn't realize they were such a busy little community.
Well, they technically have a lot based on.
Mm hmm. They really do.
Well, I think they're both.
Handsome.
Any questions?
That'll be over half a mil by the end of the year, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Why ad balloon taxes go up?
And we're just starting our summer really. So we have this month, the next month where. A lot of times that's where we see our bigger transactions where we lose the most. I mean. I believe for. I can't remember if it's May or it has to be May or April. It was like. Over a hundred thousand for one month because we had the shop quick sell, which would have been a regular sale. And then, um. Case apartments, I believe. And then there was Red Dot Storage. That was. A hundred and seventy-nine million dollar joint mortgage. So obviously not all ours, but a portion of it would have been. That's not included. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next, Commissioners, eleven fifteen, Michael Rizcolla, Tony Milner.
It's a sign.
Bite your tongue, Amy.
Now the lake's backing up. I go down there this morning before I came to work.
Yes.
Water back.
Yeah, that's a good thought. This saves me from giving your presentations. Thanks for keeping those.
Yes.
Data. Over time. Critical. As people comes up with more and more great ideas. They usually pop up. The second two. Text those as a weekend through some group that wants to call special session. Um, to do a property taxes again.
Okay.
Property tax lead, is that what it was? Yeah, that's what it was. Which. Yeah, well, yeah, it's like with with the schools. I don't know how that necessarily, but I guess. It's that they keep trying to fix it on the value side. They're doing it. Yeah. That is, we heard from. This was on value side. Yeah, and that's how that's what causes problems. Long term. But as we learned from some county commissioner during the. Uh, K C meeting, that would be difficult. Actually approach it on the other side.
Politically.
Absolutely. Political decisions. Where we can.
Good rich. All that rabbit trending.
You not know. You not know.
Greg's not that old, so we can answer that.
Well, he wasn't even here then anyways, so. Okay, well, we're at eleven fifteen, so Michael, you're you're up.
Good morning, Andy.
Okay.
Great. So, um. Thank you for offering me this opportunity to come and update you. We have a few good things, a lot of good things happening, but one of the things that we have happening is, um. Move our same-day access, uh, which is therapy, access to therapy services, um. To Hayes Drive. And that co-locates, uh. The same-day access services for therapy. Uh, that's the most classical form of, uh, services that you would think of. Uh, outpatient and that co-locates, uh, same-day access with our crisis services at CSU. At Hayes Drive. So that is one one important thing to announce. Um. Another thing that made national news is that Kansas was selected by the U S, the the U S Health and Human Services. Access to mental health and substance use services. In addition to or in part, actually, of ten other states are implementing the, uh, federal CCVHC model. So you heard CCVHC, CCVHC, but this time. The, uh, State or Communities Act gave the U S Health and Human Services the authority to add ten states to the CCVHC. Medicaid Demonstration Program every two years, starting with the ten states being announced, uh, that was. Early in June, first week of June. And so the U S Department of Health and Human Services, through the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare, Medicare and Medicaid Services, CMS. And in partnership with the, uh, Substance Use and Mental Health, uh, Services Administration, SAMSA. Welcome ten new states, uh, into the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Medicaid Demonstration Program. Uh, after they successfully developed the necessary state-level infrastructure and work with providers in their state to develop programs. To meet the CCVHC standards, including the state of Kansas now. The CCVHC Medicaid Demonstration Program provides states with sustainable funding. That helps them expand access to mental health and substance, uh, use services, supporting the expansion of the program directly supports the national strategy. To transform our behavioral health system to build a better crisis, uh, continuum, continuum of care, including, um. The transition to the nine eight eight suicide line. Suicide and crisis pipeline and adding mobile crisis, uh, benefits to the Medicaid in new crisis services components through the Medicare program. And we have started mobile crisis services and we have, uh, been doing our best to expand mobile crisis services. Uh, throughout, uh, our Ken County service area. There is a, um. There is an active participation or rather response, uh, to the community need, uh, for crisis services. So if there is someone who needs, um, to be screened for crisis, uh, we and we need to pick them up. We can't pick them up and bring them to CSU. If they meet the criteria, uh, to be, uh, admitted. So that is an important thing to note. So. This is, uh. The state of Kansas has been the first state to initiate the CCVHC, uh, CCVHC program in the country. That is at the Medicaid level. Now, this new initiative will bring Kansas into the federal demonstration project. This means an additional expansion on the federal government's stand to adopt the CCVHC model as a national model. So Kansas is ahead of the key. And, uh, this is just great news. Now. We have some upcoming match days. We encourage everyone, uh, uh, to go on on our website and explore those are what. The rural Riley County Match Days coming up, August twenty ninth to the thirtieth. So all are encouraged to participate. Um, we have a, um. A great happening, uh, uh, happening now, taking place now, and that is our Pawnee Stars Camp. And, uh, the Stars Camp is entering its twenty-second year in what Star stands for, strength. Teamwork, attitude, relationships, and self-esteem. It's this huge summer camp run by Pawnee Mental Health, uh, and it stands as a beacon of both in growth for children, um. Who have serious emotional disturbances and Stars Camp plays an important role in the lives of children. Facing significant challenges due to the severity of their emotional disturbances. For many, it is the. They can attend. By providing a nurturing environment where they can thrive emotionally and socially fostering. Leadership skills and the strong sense of belonging with a supportive community. Within a supportive community. And so they are empowered to navigate their challenges. Uh, surrounded by trained staff, um. To, uh, comprehend and understand the unique needs, uh, in twenty twenty three. Just the year twenty twenty three. Ninety six youth were in attendance. Uh, the first camp experience was or is actually White Memorial. So we do this in two phases, one for the younger. Children and one for the older, uh, children. So the first camp experience is at White Memorial. Stars Camp and that's for ages eleven and under. And that occurs between July first and second. Um. And that's where they ever engage us in Pawnee's youth community services. It features activities, uh, like, uh, air surfing. Uh, swimming, archery and more. And a second group of older children will have, uh, camp experience at Rock Springs Ranch in August. And that is at Rock Springs Stars Camp. That is ages twelve to seventeen. And that is between August fifth to the seventh. We have received some donations for it and we're very excited about it. There is also an art reception Friday, July twenty sixth from six to nine P M. Um, and a band will perform, um, from seven to nine P M. The reception makes a. Conclusion of our Kansas Arts Commission Grant and will showcase the work of, uh, our clients from. Uh, youth and adult art groups, part partnerships with the Manhattan Arts Center in Kansas Art Commission and, uh, big thank you for. Flight, brew coffee for opening their space for us. There's also arts in the park. Friday, July twelfth at seven thirty at City Park, um. The address art fund selected nonprofits for summer series Pawnee Mental Health. Will be, uh, the featured organization and, uh, we invite everyone to, uh, join. We are. We have our signature annual event coming up, inspiring hope and help. And, uh. That is a live event November seventh. And we'll have an online auction October twenty eighth to November eighth. And, uh. It will be held at the, uh, K-State Alumni Association. And we invite everyone to join us. Uh, a lot happening around CCBHC, a lot happening around, uh, outreach to clients, um. Improving access, uh, providing more access. I'm looking at the, uh, the, uh. We are pulling the numbers through the year and it looks, uh, great that, you know, we have been able to. Provide a lot of services, uh, to a lot of, uh, individuals who need the services in Riley County. Once these numbers are finalized, I'll share with you. So that's for, uh, this year twenty twenty.
Started in July of last year, August, let's change that. Transition.
The transition to.
C C P H.
CCBHC, the transition started July first of last year. We were awarded CCBHC. Um. Uh, designation as a provisionally certified in April towards the end of April last year. And then it went into effect July first and we actually just got our new certificate to what. You put it all for our sites. We're very excited. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't have.
I have a question, actually. Um, is it a twenty four hour service for the late mental health? Crisis intervention where you can pick up and admit, or is it just during certain?
So crisis services, we have multiple components within crisis. We have, um. We have a partnership with the district county. I'm sorry, the Riley County, uh, Police, uh, Department, and there is a co-responder model. So that is one, one of the components, uh, that we have through crisis. Uh, we also have the classical crisis services where screening can happen. Uh, and if there is a need, we, uh, we are able to, uh. Triage to our crisis stabilization unit. There's also another component, which is mobile crisis intervention. And that is happening on in the central and, uh, we're expanding it to our western region, uh, and surrounding counties, um. It depends. It depends.
So. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners. You have Elizabeth Ward, eleven thirty.
Oh, maybe my boss.
I know. Your numbers get so small.
Well, there's plenty of room over here. It could be made bigger. I don't know why. It have to be that small.
Yeah. It's the only way they'll fit on that size page. You go to legal page, legal size pages, and they can become bigger.
Can't you make these columns smaller or make the numbers bigger? And there's plenty of, that's why I said there's plenty of room where these numbers are.
Well, it's twofold. You gotta get it fit this way and you gotta get it this way. So you gotta get it fit both ways is the challenge. I'm sure she's got as big a font as she can and accomplish that on that size paper.
Well. Maybe we need a bigger piece of paper.
You can do that.
And you're gonna have your four different pieces of papers and then you're gonna try to match up.
Well. It's still be able to read it. What you can do. One sheet that's bigger. We're talking about making these numbers bigger. We could do like a. Eleven by fourteen would fit on there.
Look, we have commissioners that want them one size. We have another commissioners that want another size and another commission wants another size. That's what we always try to accomplish.
Greg and I both have trucks. It was just. Well, I couldn't find my magnifying glass at home and it had about three.
Commissioner to get mad if it was anything other than this size because it did not fit in a binder well. Had to be eight and a half by eleven because it does not fit in a binder well. Didn't want it on double pages. Well, from your standpoint, but from someone else, they didn't.
Fold it and put it in a.
Convince one or more of your other board members and we can do that.
Why you can't fold these things?
Well, but then you can't tell the tone either. Cause that's five for.
Well, there you go. See? See?
They have a big.
I've got some big, big, um, paper.
You go ahead.
No consensus on that issue. Yes, well, yeah.
Well, good morning.
Plenty of other moments like that.
Yeah. Elizabeth Ward, Human Resources Director, and I'm here to present. Again, uh, the same information that was presented previously about the new and expanded positions. And so there is nothing modified or changed. Except the removal of the, uh, Health Department position, which. Really should never should have been in this presentation was, uh, was a grant funded position to begin with, um. Or, I don't know, funded, I guess I should say. So we have, um. Still have the same request for planning and development, county attorney and human resources and clerk's office. So the planning and development. Administrative Assistant is a, it's an existing PD, um, but it is a position right now that is as needed. So we're moving a part time as needed position and creating a full time position. Um, and if I have the information as to what that position would do and why it was needed. The cost of that would be sixteen thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty three from what is currently budgeted. So you can see the whole amount is there. Uh, but we do have a budget for it. Um, so then the thirty nine thousand is how we would end up, right? Does that make sense? Um, so the county attorney is a brand new position. It's not an expanded position. Um, it has a new position description. Uh, both you'll remember both Aaron and Barry were here to talk about the needs for that position and it would be a full time position. Um, criminal investigator. So the cost of that position salary and benefits is eighty two thousand five twenty two. And then the clerk human resources is more similar to that planning and development. We currently have an as needed position. Uh, budgeted for that and we would be asking to expand that to a full time position. So the the cost would be fifty one, one eighty three. Um, so those are the three positions that are being requested. Uh, and then I did have the attached justification to the position, uh, in there and I I think. I think that's the crux of all the information that we have unless you have specific questions. I mean, I could certainly rehash the need of it, all three, um, if you'd like to discuss that.
Well, speaking of, then. Um, planning and development, I understand, uh, perceived in. Looking for someone and I know the, uh. The tech position, you couldn't even, can't even fill, you know. At one time you were wanting another, um.
Environmental, yeah.
Environmental. Very, like, very specific. That you can't even find someone to do that now, but this person would be helping and I and I can see that's a problem, you know. I, I. I can. I can go along with that position. The Attorney's Office. We added a full time employee there last year and, um. And in fact, this is to help RCPD and we're already increasing their budget test. I don't have a problem. I don't. I don't agree with that one. Uh, clerk one, I'm. Fifty fifty on. Not sure.
Is there anything we can, any questions or specifics or?
You know, I just, I'm not. Part of the justification is showing, oh, look how many people the city has. Yeah, look how they're doing. They're trying to get rid of people because they've got too many people.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's.
Well, but that's one of the, yes, it is. That's one of the things you use to suggest vacation, saying, oh, look how many they've got. And K State's the same way. They've got. You know, inflated staff. So I don't look at it for the listeners.
Sure. Yeah, and I do think it is a comparison, but I think internally we have pretty strong justification for positions separately.
Yeah, that's what I pointed out, Commissioner McKelley and all three commissioners. That was just to show that we really are. We really do, as I tell you, in every area of our staff, from elections, the taxes, everywhere. Do, uh, more with less and that's always been my philosophy and really Tony's philosophy for decades. And so that was just to show as a snapshot, we are not overstaffed. It wasn't necessarily a justification from me anyway. Um, it's just truly day to day operations. There's many times because various department heads need the services of. Elizabeth and Michelle at the same time that we may not have anyone in the back to address HR phone calls and concerns and. That position, like I say, we have become so heavily reliant on it for recruitment. And making the appointments with department heads and those individuals applying for jobs and organizing all that. Just imagine that with each position. I mean, you may be setting up. Five to ten interviews per position that comes open and. It's a big government act. So we've just become totally dependent on that for those aspects of human resources to. Why it truly is needed. When we, uh, have a gap like we recently had, uh, we had some elections temporaries filling in. The Elizabeth and Michelle still couldn't get to it. So it wasn't that they were picking it up. They were picking up what they could. But we told Susan, hey, we're at this gap. We're really in a conundrum workload wise. And so we pulled an elections temporary to do that. And so there truly is a need and, yeah, I apologize if it was misconstrued. We're saying they have this, so we want that. As you know, we definitely. Weren't asking for that much staff, but there truly is a need workload wise because our department, so many things that we do. HR payroll against payable. We're a service department for all of the internal departments. That that there's a huge demand that they have for our staff and I think we're doing a good job at it, but we have to have someone there to. Provide that. And there are many times when they are, Michelle and Elizabeth tied up in other areas and they definitely don't have the time to. Be scheduling and organizing all those interviews and attending interviews, uh, of all of the positions. So that's the reason.
Yeah, this chart on the division of work is, it shows that that position does different thing. It's not just somebody doing the same thing.
And and last year we did ask for a generalist and with getting just rearranging and rethinking, we did bring that down to this assistant position. And so it is a lower pay scale and it is a different, not different necessarily set of duties, but there are less responsibility, a little more oversight on the. The director, um, and the manager and it really boils down to what Rich was talking about. I mean, recruiting, retention, compliance. Um, right now we're not in every interview and that does cause us risk. Uh, there are a lot of hiring, um, pitfalls. I guess is a good way to put it. Um, so just some of those things that we need to make sure we're doing. Uh, consistently.
I'm going to know all three of them.
Okay, I was gonna say, I gave five.
Not that that's probably surprised, but I'm looking at just the overall and what it's doing to the budget overall and. I mean, my math's not perfect here, but it's just these three positions alone add almost. Eleven, twelve percent of the total overall just cost the cola that we already have kind of incorporated into it. I mean, we're just. Um, we added a handful of positions last year. Um, I definitely agree with you on your analysis on the county attorneys. That was, it ended up being the. Well over two hundred thousand dollar position. Um, I'm not, just on the personnel side, I'm I'm of the. Um. I'm of the philosophy that we really need to continue to work on retaining and not recruitment and not adding new. Um, there's there's several different reasons on that and, um. I'm just not going to continue to add positions and add the the overhaul that that comes with it. Um, whether it's, um, payroll, whether it's benefits, whether it's insurance, the whole nine yards, just not willing to do it at this moment in time.
Um, I'm not necessarily in agreement with that, so. I, uh. Uh, you know, the, like in planning and development, I know the, um. Uh, that Amanda's really worked hard on that and trying to, you know, get, provide services, uh, to. Our citizens and and by. Making a part time position, full time, you know, they have done, um, there's some cost savings that are some credit that's been given to that. Account, which I think is, I think that's really a good way to to go about it. You're not really. You know, you're. You're increasing services as, um. You know, as you need, um. The, uh, criminal investigator, uh, I don't know. I'm all torn on that one. I'm not sure. I. Don't like to see the county attorney at at the mercy of the police department whenever they don't. Have anybody or they don't want to do it. So I'm kind of torn on that. The Human Resources Assistant, I can see where that'd be a really add in that department. So, um. You know, these, these. You know, these, these, these positions will keep the, you know, keep us from losing people too. You know, if you have enough staff, then you don't lose people because they're overworked.
We've lost people because of it already. When you make it sound like all those positions are critical and they're emergency, but we've been surviving without them.
Yeah.
I understand the need for services, but I hate to say it, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm gonna say it because the live stream's on too, but we're gonna have to give up some of our services in order to be able to have an affordable community to live in because that's, that's gonna be the quality of life issue moving forward for future generations. I'm sorry, it just is. And we've got to have to balance that out.
So John, you did hit on something. And actually, for the audience, I guess we have lost people because of the extensive amount of work that some, some physicians have. But that's, I guess that's the bottom line, is we can't continue to create and expand our services without the staffing. And so we're, you know, some of these departments are at or above capacity.
And I'm saying it's time to look at the services.
Well, like Planning is cut services already, you know, with the water testing and environmental testing. And so it's, you know, they've already cut services and this looks like it's, it's needed. What other services do you want to cut? Like in HR, what do you want to cut?
I don't think we have to cut anything at this.
Well, you were saying we have to cut, look at services, what do you want?
Yeah, we, overall, we need to look at services, but have we not been doing what we needed to be doing already? Are we just expanding?
No, we're not expanding, but we are struggling to keep up with what is required for three hundred people. We, we're, I mean, the bottom line.
If you didn't have three hundred people, you know, if we didn't keep growing like this, there wouldn't be a need for that. That's my point.
I mean, we, bottom line is we are understaffed by, by any, any statistic of the number of people that you should have for HR representatives. And we really have six hundred people because we have the additional three hundreds type. And, and they take just as much work on the HR side. They, I understand that they don't come to work every single day, but they simply have to be processed all steps of employment. And so, I mean, we are working nights, weekends, holidays. I mean, these things are happening, you're right, but eventually staff will get burned out like they have in other areas.
Go ahead.
As you know, this year we did reduce services. We got rid of wildlife and parks. That was something the commission challenged with. So I hope we're at least acknowledge that staff is looking at that. And you should acknowledge all the department heads and the initial budgets that was presented on how low the three Cs increase was. It was, it made the budgeting process much easier for the administrative personnel and the commissioners to at least get to this point. You should feel really good where we're at. I'm not saying passive where it's at, but it made it much easier because of the work of these individuals. So we are giving up some services. To provide the same amount of service, I would have needed to come to you with another front desk customer service when we did the divisions of elections and the rest of the office because we don't have the staff that has the time to dedicate to that. So we are doing that, and I think other departments are as well because I, I truly believe that, as you see with Planning and Development, our departments just do more with less. My philosophy, my entire career, commissioners, is to hire really good people and overwork them. It honestly is. And Elizabeth's right, there's a point to which you can only do so much of that. To your case, your question, Commissioner, I mean, Cindy Valenti was here for a long time. Part of the reason Cindy left is because she could go to another entity and not be in the lead position, get the same amount of money, but not have the responsibilities and that breadth of a position. And that's honestly, that's from Cindy Valenti. She would tell you that.
She told me that.
She told me that honestly, and I'm not saying that's why it's red, commissioners. I'm not using it as a fear tactic, but it is true. I, I demand a lot out of fewer resources. Why? The more people I have, the more work it is for me. It's the truth. Ask anyone in my office what my door is like. They call it the revolving door, you know? It's just that way. So I feel overall the majority of the departments really do try very, that with less. And we, we only come to you when we feel there is a real need. And, you know, I think it is transitionary, you know, like Amanda's done with the part-time and we did. And I think a prime example of today is what you approved with the opioid. It was twenty, now they go to thirty based on the need. They were looking at full-time, but they didn't come to you with full-time commissioners. They came to you with a lesser amount than maybe what you anticipated. So just give staff credit for only bringing to you things that they truly believe are a need. And I am fine with cutting services, commissioners, but if you want to cut them, then cut them. We can, we've got a lot of areas we could look to cut if you really want to cut services. But there's an impact, and there's things that we are statutory that are required to fund that we can cut right now.
Yeah, these, these agents, some of these agencies, if I were to go, one, one million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars go onto outside agencies, you know, that would, that would more than cover this one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar request. So look at that. We're not required to fund those. I mean, I like to fund them, but I mean, it's good to fund them, but you know, where do, where do you draw the line?
And just, I mean, I think, I don't, looking to approve all of mine, I can go line by line or, you know, item by item, yes. And. I don't know, motion, motion to not fund, I'd make a motion to not fund the attorney request.
That one I can live with.
I'll second that one. Okay, I guess it's been moved and seconded to not fund the criminal investigators new position in the County Attorney's Office. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I would make a motion to keep the other two, Planning and Development and the Clerk and the HR.
I'm just not sure on the HR one myself. I'm not, I've never been either one of them.
About Planning and Development, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
And so the two of us, um.
Yeah, I make, yeah, we're good.
Okay, make a motion to approve the Planning and Development position.
One second.
It's been moved and seconded to, it's a distinct cleaning position. Span the Administrative Assistant one, new position in the Planning and Development Department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. You made that motion, that last one? Okay.
Nice.
Okay, she made it.
I made it, okay.
Okay, now I just wanted to be sure. Sorry, I was writing the other one.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I still, I guess, need to be convinced on the HR.
And to be honest, Rich, that's probably very common consensus. I don't think most people know the scope of what HR does or why we're busy in regular places. Don't necessarily get excited to come see HR. So, you know, the thing is, is if, and I'll just, I, I don't know if I'm convincing you, but I will just mention on that, I think it's really the best argument or just reason is on this chart. And so right now, the thing is, is that we need to do things like succession planning. We need to do things like internal leadership and management training. And I truly can't spend enough time doing those things, focusing on how to create a program and making those things realistic. You know, we have a big transition in Plancing's office. We have had recently a big transition in the Appraisers' office. We've had these areas where we are going to need to bolster up our leadership, our management, our compliance. And those are the areas that the director needs to be able to have time to do. And we can't get to that if we don't have some of the administrative tasks.
To, and, I don't know. Not meaning to fancy.
Yeah.
I worked for how many years, forty-seven years in places. I worked one place that had an HR person.
I know.
And for two years. No place else that wasn't even a position. I mean, there was always a payroll for it, but it wasn't. They all seem to survive, lost some business.
Yeah. And, and just as a response, I will mention, like Brittany and I've talked about quite a bit, she worked previously as their finance person, but she also did all the HR work. And so somebody has to be doing benefits. Somebody has to be making sure that the need is covered and following a ton of federal laws, right? Someone has to be doing that, hopefully effectively. But there are just more and more and more requirements for people management, and people are getting in a lot of hot water. And that really, that's really more where I believe you need your director to be focusing instead of necessarily the day-to-day paper management, you know, questions about how do I check my time card? You know, those things. And we're doing those things, right? Because they're immediate and people need assistance. But I do think there's value in it, and I also understand, you and I have talked about, like, you know, HR management and experience in other industries.
Go ahead.
Just so the commissioners knows, at least for the position that we've requested is, you know, me in my position, kind of like you guys in your position, staff brings me what they think we really need, and I sit down and analyze it, just so the commissioners knows, you know, I did my, do my due diligence on it. The initial proposal from staff was it'd be a grade thirteen. You see, it's at a grade eight, which is much, much less dollar-wise significantly, I can tell you. And I tell them, like, we can do this, we can manage with this, and you're gonna have to do that, but it'll take the pressure off you off the lower administrative stuff. And so, so you know, we just don't, at least I don't, take just what staff gives and without going through it with a fine-tooth comb. And so, you know, we do our best to keep the budgetary number low and get the job done that we need. Related to, you know, workload with staff, Elizabeth knows, and I know some commissioners know, we get requests from commissioners to do additional projects, new things. We went to a conference, we saw this, and Elizabeth knows last year, she came to me and said, we're gonna do this. I said, no, we don't have the time. You're gonna get this, this, and this done first. We don't have the staff to do it. And so when new projects come, I will tell commissioners, no, we don't have the bandwidth. We just frankly don't, commissioners. It is, it is that way, and that's why, as you know, us lead administration commissioners told department heads, don't be working and emailing and texting on weekends and off-hours because that's when they're doing the extra things. And we still need to keep reminding staff of that because that is when they're getting those extra things done.
And, and I, I don't disagree, Rich. I do think that we have to have a balance. We talk to you guys about that all the time. But I know that more and more, I'm seeing even Michelle work the evenings. She did emails yesterday, did fill positions. I did, I tried to fill positions Friday night. You know, we're just, we're at a place where we can't, those aren't, those aren't extra things. Those are literally like contacting candidates so we can, I mean, these are, I agree with Rich. We want to do the big fancy things, but these are the things that we are not able to get done, you know, eight to five. And, you know, just this morning, we had two people unexpectedly had very severe FMLA requests. So that derailed the morning plans because we needed to work with their, I mean, it's what needs to happen. But we just can't get to the, the sort of things that do. And, and, I mean, no one's gonna say we're gonna stop working or we're gonna cut our services. We, these are important things. I'm not, it's not like that, like, but it is, it is, there's just a signal in workload. Yeah. And maybe I don't do a good enough job, you know, communicating that on a regular basis or open to, open inside there too.
And I didn't think anyone was making casual requests. I mean, I know, I know there's, you know, this wasn't just.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Spur the moment thing, oh, let's ask for this.
We're doing our due diligence on those things.
And I, I think that, and I believe in our department heads that they're all very diligent about what they bring to us. And you can tell, if we only have three requests this year, that's really saying they've really looked at everything. We could have found.
And he probably had more than that.
Oh, yes. Oh, no, we definitely haven't discussed more than that. But people realize how important it is, yeah.
Absolute need, not once.
It, it really is. And there's obviously, I wish it is, there's the like, I really think I need, but I can wait another year wishes. And then there's these that are, that we feel are appropriate now. And beyond that, I guess I should mention, we not only talk about the new positions, but we talk about the structure of the current positions. Are the job duties in the current positions being done? Is that still relevant? Can we combine? Can we do cross-training? You know, I mean, we really try to think about how we can just present the services, which is the key really, not the number of employees or the payroll they're making, but what will get us the services that we at least understand from you guys that are expected. And so I don't disagree with John's point. We can't, into the, into the future, can't continue to have increasing services without increasing staff.
And I think with your office, since you used to, the elections people and, and you used to work together and, and cover each other, we're now they're upstairs and you're, you're gonna be sure to have that coverage, you said.
This is true.
What I can see.
Both sides in our office are gonna feel that headache. I haven't really realized. I mean, because whether you work in elections or not, if HR and payroll and accounts payables under me, guess what they're doing on Elections Day? They're working elections. They're not doing HR and payroll. Because that's just the theme in, in the same, it's the same way if they need help. I mean, there's been times when they needed help and they called Elections up to help covering areas where we're understaffed. Just like I gave the example of our HR assistant was, we didn't have one, so we pulled in Elections Assistant to help. And so that's, that is truly how we operate. That's the only way we can get by. And I think it'll be a struggle for both sides after this transition's been made, realizing how much we co-dependent on each other.
Well, it translates not just on occasion. So right now, this person who's doing the recruiting and communicating with departments and scheduling interviews is works four hours a day when we can keep people. And so that hurt, the people are responding back all day, long evening, whatever. So the election staff who was on the frontline was getting a lot of that. And then, you know, responding because the person isn't here except half the day. So it's not, it's not just when needed. I'm, I'm, I'm interested and anxious to see the impact.
Yeah, and nobody's gonna let the phone ring for.
No, 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 not, no, not a Bradley.
We got a one-ring rule.
Yeah. Yeah, I think all the departments are that way. They service people that are calling in and needing help first, and then I don't think they ever let the phone.
That's an art of the.
Yeah.
Sorry.
But I think you're right. I mean, I have traveled, I have seen other, I've worked with a lot of other areas, human resources managers in other areas, and I think we have incredible services. To John's point, maybe those, they, they need to be reevaluated, but right now we offer everything at a very good customer service level.
So we'll continue to discuss that last week, it sounds like.
I can take it on.
Yeah, we can take on that. I'm still back and forth with myself.
I appreciate your, your thoughts on this. I guess, should I just say, Commissioner, if you want to have like a conversation, okay, well, we don't find out why if I have that, I mean, more than open half those conversations to look at other options.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer. Okay, so on June twenty-fourth, you had departments that were over the eight percent on their three Cs go back, review, and adjust accordingly. And those adjustments were made to the Attorney's Office, ambulance, registered deeds, the Clerk's Office, and the transfer to the Health Department. The biggest one being the transfer to the Health Department. They were able to adjust their transfer and reduce it by two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars. And they were able to do so because they had just recently found out that they were getting full funding for family planning and MCH. And so that was very good news at the same time that you were making that decision. So they were able to reduce that formally. So with that, I highlighted all this because all this information was new compared to all the top stuff.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So the value of a mill is eight-hundred-and-twenty.
You skipped a, did you, are all the, all these expanded positions in there now?
They, I have a line, this is for it now, and so now I'll.
It's underneath the coal level?
It's underneath coal, yeah.
Oh.
I didn't want to add it to the department level.
Oh, okay. So that's why I was looking at the department levels and seeing there, but okay, I didn't catch that. Okay.
Yes. So obviously that number will now change based on at least one approval and one no. So, okay, so, and the opioid funding has been approved. Okay, so the value of a mill is eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars. That is putting us, with all these changes to fund the twenty-twenty-five budget, at thirty-nine point zero one. At thirty nine point zero one. Which is zero point eight five six mils less than the twenty twenty four budget. And is, we are still over. The revenue neutral by zero point seven four seven mils, which equates to six hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So that's with all the changes.
So you took eighty off.
Yeah, and you just took eighty off. So that's six hundred and ten thousand over now. And then I did add this information on here because there was a consensus. To use one and a half mils for agency appropriations minus the appropriations that were obligated. To provide funding to such as extension, small cities, RCPD and community corrections. So one and a half mils calculates out to one million, two hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety five dollars. And then I just wanted to kind of give a snapshot versus that long spreadsheet of all the appropriations of. Here's what was approved. Mine, you know, I already excluded those other ones off. And then here are the requests that they have. Including the changes that the commissioners have already agreed upon. So. Sorry, John.
Got a question on, on, cause you got animal shelter on there. Is that? The other counties do, I mean, that's, it's not animal shelter. That's, yeah, I guess it is animal shelter, not. But, but is that an option for us or is that, I mean, do all counties have?
You have no legal obligation to have an animal shelter.
I know we have.
I know that sounds easy.
Well, I, I know, um.
The other option is, well, how do you, how do you deal with animals that are in the unincorporated area?
Right.
And that was, that was for a full year, but we, but it's gonna be prorated, so it's could be more.
That's all of twenty twenty five.
But supposedly in March, we're gonna adjust it and they've seen some numbers. It's. I just didn't know whether they need to be included on that list or not.
That should be down when we do this.
And the thing is, on the adjustment, there's no guarantee that adjustment's gonna be recommended lower.
So with that.
We'll rearrange some within that.
And the reason we ended up there, just so you, the more we're remembered, was because we were in terms of working on some kind of actual. Animal control services.
Right.
A precondition that we were facing was when we first need to contract for access to the animal shelter.
And as you were saying, we're doing extras. We need to do one and a half mils for extras. We need to cut it down. We had been past the beginning, but that's, it's uh mostly optional, those are optional services.
So with those appropriations and with the changes that you have made, you're still um. About eighteen thousand dollars over that one and a half mils that you had suggested. So that's why I wanted to separate that out a little bit. Plus, of course, some of that's economic development, but that's a transfer from the general fund.
No, I, I mean, I, I think there's a good, a good chart. Let's see what's going on.
What I thought maybe to just do to balance that out, to make it even, at least for now is. Go and just take the difference off the council of aging and call that the increase for twenty twenty five, so we. I was thinking it was a little over eighteen thousand. I'm gonna go with your math, not mine, but.
On.
The difference between the, whatever it is down there, the one point two five.
You know, make sure they give them to the senior.
Yeah.
County senior meals, we're not eating local ones.
Yeah.
But I don't, and I didn't. We can tell them that. I mean, whether they can do it, whether they do it enough, I mean. Yeah, say this is what we want to do. They, they're, they've got. They can do whatever they want, I guess, but.
Well, unless you have, unless you had a contract, you could, you could give direction, any money.
No, go ahead, go ahead. But yeah, like I say, we can say, this is why we're doing this. Whether, if they follow our thing or not, that's their problem.
It would be an issue presumably potentially for the next budget.
Yeah.
Or some, some request that comes in during that same year later, you would be entitled.
We're adding hundred thousand dollars to them, but how much of that is, is covered in Manhattan, a council on aging? Almost a hundred.
It's fifty two.
Do you have a question?
Well, just on the council on aging and maybe it's not what Greg said, but you have to remember. You know, they can probably get you the numbers on, you know, the meals that they subsidize for that group of individuals in the city of Manhattan. Small communities or rural, but have to remember, uh. It was the way it is now. It's designed to assist those within the city of Manhattan too, because they are Riley County residents as well. So you have.
And they are, and like I said, they pay less than anybody else already.
For sure.
Cause I might even put a little more to that off them. With the Pawnee myself, so I didn't get all those numbers to look around that. Whatever. Positions.
Unless you mean sizable cuts there, it's not gonna really make up the little six hundred thousand dollars. Better figure out.
But like you said, maybe we don't need, maybe the one point three like we did last year is what we need to be doing. Some of those. The, the bigger ones. All wants to do that's a big impact. You know, we, really. Adamus, money, aging and Big Lakes are. You know, what, eighty percent of our number. Not running number, don't say that's where most of it is. Not the others on value, but those are bigger impact, meaning.
City is finding Ethan on the bus.
Yeah.
I saw that number recently as a bigger number than I expected.
Yeah, I saw on their budget, that one discussion about how much it was quite a good more than that. We're looking at the budget next week. I'm sure. It shows what, what the cities, or at least what they're requesting.
They, what did they request the extra?
Yeah, and I. I did find that number again, I don't know. Last year, city was two hundred and eighteen thousand. The big that was um this year's case they cut.
What was their reasoning for cutting?
No, you're still covering, cause the Adibus runs one from the stadium in and out, so people park out there, I mean. But then they also funded a thing with, that students could ride free anywhere and they cut that off. Cause I mean, get away with that. Run that, which probably starts right now, guessing, see their funding, you know, with their state funding. Yes, I don't remember now.
Sounds about right.
What that was, but that was the thing they, they were cutting off was the fact that it used to be that any student, a student might ride anywhere.
Kind of did, were they, is that a big number?
I don't remember. I can't find it on here.
No, I'm just kinda curious.
Yeah.
So are the commissioners okay with the departments that were asked to reduce down to closer to eight percent? Are you satisfied with those adjustments? For those departments? Okay, that was one ask that you had at last, to be sure we've gotten that area though. Where the commissioners wanted. It was clerk, attorney and who, Whitney?
Transferred to the Health Department.
Yeah, and registered deeds.
I believe they all cut down to around eight percent, didn't they?
Yes, so um, they all got to eight percent or under, except for the Attorney's Office, but they're at eight point five six, so.
And the commissioners have made a decision on two of the three new and expanded positions. Did you want to look at uh making any cuts to appropriations this time? Or you want us to come back to you with other information?
I don't know. I've looked at appropriations and I didn't. Really affect this time. I saw the overall numbers, but like I said, I'm gonna go back through that again, so.
Okay.
After the appropriations, if you want to make adjustments, you know, you'll get some money there, but you won't get the six hundred and some odd thousand.
Six hundred thousand.
You know, generally, and John's not gonna like this, traditionally you get down to this point, the places where you can. Make the biggest impacts on the budget are the CIP transfer and the three Cs in public works. Leon Hobson. Leon Hobson threw that out there every time is, you know, that's a possibility. That's where you can. Make the largest adjustments and not impact personnel. And that's why I said those two commissioners, not impact personnel.
We could disinclude this year, the budget stabilization, that's two hundred and fifty. Um, that allows us to maybe keep, I'd like to keep a little bit more of the CIP and I just say that because.
Got a lot coming.
We got a lot coming up. So.
Infrastructure, not.
I feel like we are at a good spot there. I don't wanna keep doing that every year, but I think we could trade one for the other.
Cushion there already, that's.
So I would be willing to make that full cut to get it down and then see where we can draw off of.
No, which one was that?
Budget stabilization.
It's, is that under general?
General services, yeah.
Services or admin.
And that, that's when you can cut out, like, we didn't increase it last year, did we?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I just wouldn't get in the habit of not doing it every year because that is a question we get asked specifically with bond rating agencies and so. Maybe cutting it down, but not all out of there and balancing some of it. CIP, remember commissioners were coming to you with a transfer into CIP for eight point nine. So.
So I tell you what, let's.
As we've got, looking, cause we're. Or is that the transfer, you've got a transfer. Four million for CIP, is that, that's not new, that's.
That's new and that's, that is new, that is things that are on the horizon for next year. That have not been yet approved and obligations that we know we have for twenty twenty five. In leases and different things like that, bond payments, you know.
Well, and we were down like minus twenty seven percent.
So really.
Also got an extra eight that we're putting in.
That is not included. It's gonna, it's gonna, we're gonna ask that it gets done before this, that's why it's not included.
Yeah, cause that's, yeah, that's a separate, but, but. Everything, but it's, it's still CIP. It's, we're definitely pretty good money in the CIP.
Absolutely.
And if you cut the. You know, two hundred and fifty off budget stabilization and then if you cut, you know, three hundred and fifty, that could seem.
We're getting close.
That puts us just about there.
Yeah.
Without having to do anything else.
Yeah.
Think about, I know we're getting to that point where we need to. Start wrapping this up, so.
Yeah.
Well, we're very close, but we want to be sure you guys' questions are answered and you're comfortable with what you want to get accomplished.
And if we get to the end and there's some leftover like Charis Act funds or something, we could transfer that back over.
Left that this eight point nine is, and that's what we'll do at the end of this year. We'll, we'll get back on that regular schedule like we did annually, okay? Here's how much we uh spent, less than what we budgeted to spend. Here's how much more revenues came up. This is our unanticipated carryover. And this is what we'd recommend to transfer into CIP that isn't gonna be budgeted.
Yeah, in case we need it in the RBA.
That isn't going to be, that wasn't budgeted. And we used to always uh traditionally commissioners, there was a million or two because of increased revenues or. You know, I mean, the gaps in employment, when we don't know when someone's gonna resign. And it takes a month, a month and a half to get a position filled, so you don't spend that money. So that's all part of that carryover.
Gary said he would get it, add just a quarter of mils.
Don't forget, he did.
It's Gary, it's Gary's increase.
He's saying it's RCPD's increase, not his. Well, if you left a hundred and fifty in budget stabilization. Took a hundred and fifty out and then. Five hundred thousand out of the CIP, that puts us well over.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that, commissioners, because as all of you know, there hasn't been one year that we funded every request of CIP for that year.
I can, I can go with that.
And we'll still have money in there if something comes up. John calls and says a rotor grader blows up or, you know, whatever, you know, we'll still have monies to address things.
That's not cool. That's not cool.
Don't put it out.
Yeah. Or tornado bits.
So we're good.
We're getting there.
We're getting there.
Yeah.
So just to confirm, are you all in agreement? Cause I only heard one commissioner, a hundred and fifty thousand off the budget stabilization and five hundred thousand off the transfer to CIP.
We've been more than that years past, so.
You're saying taking a hundred and fifty off, we're moving it to, change it to a hundred.
Leave a hundred, hundred thousand, it's two hundred, take a hundred and fifty thousand out. So we'll have something, we usually do a bunch of. Amendment and we'll transfer it back at some point in time and take five hundred thousand out of CIP. We've taken. Geez, one year, a million something plus out of there to, to balance it out, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Just want to be sure Brittany's clear on the budget stabilization because I think we're hearing two different things. Do you want to leave a hundred and fifty? In.
I want to save a hundred thousand in and take a hundred and fifty thousand out.
Okay, so then it'll be four point one, okay.
Well, let me see what, see how those come down.
So are you clear? Could you?
Also need to look at appropriations, it might be a little bit there.
Restate the consensus that you understand.
They, a hundred and fifty thousand off of budget stabilization, so it increased to four point one million. And then take five hundred thousand dollars off the CIP.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. How are you paying for RCPD? How are you paying for RCPD increases?
That puts us down in past, actually, right now, that puts us past revenue neutral, actually.
Really? Really?
Including, including R C P D's increase.
Yes. So the people, since you confirmed that eight and two thousand.
Now we got some appropriations to discuss and a third position to discuss.
There'll be some, there'll be, but still be some filling, but.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, commissioners. Do you have any other questions or anything else you want me to review?
Come up next Monday, we'll hit it again.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
And on Monday is when I bring back eight point nine million transfer as well.
You done having fun?
Today I am. Of course, we don't have to meet back until Monday, so.
Do not.
Thursday instead of meeting, we get to blow some stuff up. I'm gonna blow some.
At least you're doing it in another county.
Exactly.
I moved to adjourn the, uh, July first meeting for county officials.
I would second that.
We decided to adjourn the July first meeting of the Raleigh County.